Might as well be involved because the momentum is there to do something. And I'd rather be in the game than not be in the game at all. So colleagues, I hope you could support this.
Matters now before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes, one no.
And joining us now by phone is District 14 Councilmember Jose Wezar. Councilmember Wezar, thanks for joining us on Council Week in Review.
Thanks for having me, Jack.
As you know, the state of California currently operates under a constitution. How long has that been around? How does it affect the average citizen, taxpayer, and voter? And do you believe it needs to be changed? And if so, why?
Well, it absolutely needs to be changed, Jack. And that's why the council supported an effort to convene a state convention to look at our constitution. You know, the California constitution hasn't been fundamentally revised since 1879. And the times are different. It was a different situation, a different way to govern. And in fact, here closer to home in Los Angeles, we recently revised our own constitution, called the charter. We convened individuals to make recommendations as to how we could better function as a city. And this will have a tremendous impact, I believe, on the way we live each and every day. I mean, we all felt the effects of the state not having a budget for several months. People were not getting paid. Our transportation suffered. Our ability to operate our schools suffered. And we need to do something so that we change the way the state fundamentally operates and we don't have these late budgets being adopted. And so that we have a better way of making sure that your everyday citizen will have the transportation it needs, the schools it needs, and all the benefits that come in living in one of the best states. Now, changing people alone, electing new people alone, will not make matters better until we change the way the state functions.
An obvious question would be, who's behind the movement for change? And should we be concerned about the possibility of special interest groups trying to influence the outcome?
Yeah, there's been a grassroots effort, primarily coming from the Bay Area, that is working to make this possible. But you know, like in any initiative, any idea, we all need to get involved. We all need to participate. We all need to make sure that it is representative of the people that live in California. And in fact, our motion that we passed here in City Council included some conditions such as that we would like to see a diversity of ethnicity, a diversity of political ideology, so that we make sure that all perspectives are being represented. And it's not just one perspective that is being represented at this convention. So we hope that as we move forward and we get a better and clearer picture as to what this may look like, that it's going to be representative of all people.
What determines if we actually convene a constitutional convention?
Well, you know, the voters will ultimately decide whether or not to create a convention. You know, similar to what we did here in Los Angeles in 1997, the voters voted to create a city charter commission that looked at our own so-called constitution. And the ultimate product of the state constitution review will actually come back to the voters to decide. So, one, the voters vote to have a convention in the first place. And secondly, whatever the convention participants come out with, the voters will then have a second shot to vote on the final product.
People around here, 10 years ago, as I know you, noticed that at one point we had two different charter commissions in Los Angeles. How would delegates to the state constitutional convention be chosen?
That's still being reviewed right now. And we, there are several ideas on the table. When we had our discussion here on City Council, there was some ideas that perhaps cities should have their appointing authority of delegates, or that the city should maintain some control over who represents the city at this convention. Maybe it's done by assembly districts. That's all being discussed right now. But at the end of the day, we hope that we abide by the main contentions in the Voting Rights Act, which has issues of diversity in it and one person, one vote.
So even a California constitutional convention would fall under the Federal Voting Rights Act?
Not necessarily, although in our motion that we passed, we asked that they attempt to abide by those items in the Voting Rights Act. And the Voting Rights Act was intended to protect the interests of one person, one vote. And that in turn will result in more diversity and making sure that people's points of view are represented at the state convention.
At a convention, would everything be on the table? Would the entire state constitution be under review or just certain areas? I know a lot of people, for example, are thinking about Prop 13.
Yeah. Well, there are certain aspects or certain issues that have been brought up as the main issue that people want to discuss. For example, the requirement in the state that we need a two-thirds of the legislature to approve the budget before it is passed. That certainly is going to be on the table because we know that that has been the culprit of many of the problems that we have in our great state. You know, I think it's two other states that have the same requirement. And in those states, they have about 70% Democrats. And here, we have found that the minority party has held the budget hostage for some minor issues that I think we shouldn't allow to see us from moving forward to adopt a budget. That's one item that will be discussed. Certainly term limits. We found that although the voters in the state of California generally support term limits, what we've seen is in the state assembly, for example, two, three-year terms where assembly members get there and are already thinking of their reelection in the next couple of years. And after that, they're out soon. So they are already looking for their next office. That tends to create some problems. And certainly, the funding formulas for our schools will be discussed. And we will, at the convention, we also look at the various commissions that operate under the state's jurisdiction. There's a lot of redundancy. Perhaps we need to look at, see if we even need these commissions. But at the end of the day, we don't anticipate, at least from what we've been told, that there will be any specific tax changes. Although it is, we have yet to be seen whether Proposition 13 will be looked at.
In the interest of balance, of course, the people on the minority side of the aisle would no doubt say, oh, no, we're just putting the brakes on all those tax-and-spend people on the other side of the aisle.
That's just it. But you know, it's a minority political ideology that's holding hostage what people have elected our legislators to be. And it's not so much about political ideology. It's about having a better way for people to express their interests and ideas in the budget without just having a handful of people holding the whole budget hostage.
Another huge issue that you didn't mention yet but would certainly come up have to do with water issues and the apportionment of the water that's available in the state of California.
Yeah. You know, this is an issue, the water issue, is one that the state legislature, I believe, is supposed to take up in a special session soon. And I hope they can resolve it because it's one of those issues where it's not affecting us as hard as it will be in the next few years. You know, we expect water to come out of the faucet. We really don't think about where it comes from. But if we don't address that now, we're going to have some real issues in the near future. And so I hope the special session covers it. And I don't expect it to be a huge issue in the convention, but you never know. Our hope is that action by, you know, some of the large cities in the state that have taken some action to preserve our water consumption, I hope that will help as well. So we'll wait and see.
Finally, on this topic, if a constitutional convention is approved by the voters, when might we actually see change? When would it take effect?
Yeah, from what I understand, the organizers are talking about going to the ballot in November of 2010 to gain support for the convention. And then they will go back to the voters in either 2011 or '12 to ratify or reject their new document. And so it is still a ways away. And for your average person, you know, once that is ratified or rejected in 2011, 2012, I imagine it would take effect immediately. And, you know, we need some immediate relief. You know, this economy has hurt all states throughout our union, but in California in particular, because of the way we have haphazardly created the structure in which we govern, we've created a lot of problems and we need to fix that immediately.
And finally, on a happier note, you're calling for a special day on September 29th. Tell us about your resolution for International Brasero Day.
Oh, yes. I called on the council and the city to adopt September 29th as International Brasero Day. As you may know, braseros, primarily from Mexico, served this country when they were called upon to work in our fields and railroads and factories to help put food on the table of Americans and to help our railroads going when our brave men and women were off fighting in World War II. There was a labor shortage. The program continued on to the 50s and 60s where many braseros came from Mexico to help pick the vegetables and fruits that we all ate and continue to eat. But, you know, unfortunately, some wages were garnered and deducted from their paychecks, both from the American and Mexican government. The American government has hence given back some of that money to the individual braseros. But the Mexican government continues to withhold that money. And what we did today was to declare September 29th International Brasero Day. And secondly, to make it a legislative issue for the city to lobby the American government, to in turn lobby the Mexican government to give back this money that these braseros deserve. And for me, it's a personal issue. I actually, my father and many of my uncles were braseros coming to this country in the 50s and 60s to work in what they told me were sometimes horrible conditions. And we hope that these individuals who gave so much to this country could in turn be given back some money that was unjustly taken away from them. And, you know, when I look at these individuals, they're all older men now in their 70s and 80s. It just, you see their hands, their wrinkled faces. You know, the people who worked hard all their lives and for the government to be stealing for them is just unacceptable. And we hope that the city of Los Angeles could help in this effort. And after all, many of these braseros are living in the city of Los Angeles today and are part of the fabric here in the city. So we hope we could help them.
And we're so glad. We were hoping that you would in fact make mention of your family connection with that whole story. District 7 Councilmember Jose Wezar, thanks for joining us on Council Week in Review.
Thank you, Jack.
LA City View is the government access cable channel for the city of Los Angeles, featuring live coverage of city council meetings and programming about city department services and events. And you can watch city council meetings live or view past meetings by going to the city's website at lacity.org and follow the instructions for video on demand. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays beginning at 10:00 a.m. And on Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending September 25th, 2009. On behalf of Taffy Eason and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
LA City View, Channel 35. Your city, your channel.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council meeting for September 30th, 2009. We're here in the John Farrow Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall. We meet here every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. First Friday of the month, we meet out in Van Nuys, at our Van Nuys City Hall chambers. I want to welcome all the members of the public who have joined us here today in chambers. Welcome to City Hall. Good to have you here. And we also have folks that are viewing us on Channel 35, and we welcome our viewers. Channel 35 broadcasts us throughout the city's cable system, live and then also taped each evening. And if you're not close to a television but are by a computer, you can always watch along on the internet at lacity.org and click on the links on the left side to live streaming video. We also have webcasts, sorry, we have webcasts, but we also have past council meetings archived there. So any past council meetings you'd like to observe are archived there as well. Also online, you'll find our agendas, which are available in person here in council chambers or through the city clerk's office. Those are made available 72 hours in advance or 24 hours in advance for our special meeting items. All of the supporting material for any of the items that we vote on is also available online and through the city clerk's office. That is made easy and convenient online. If you could just click right on any of the agenda items on our main agendas, it will give you all of the supporting materials that we read, so you can read it as well and be as informed as possible. We have subjects of the council meeting that are for public comment because they have not yet had a hearing in committee. If you'd like to be heard on any of those, feel free to fill out a speaker card in the back or in one of our remote locations. If you live closer to San Pedro or to Van Nuys, we can always listen to you remotely for your convenience here in council chambers and on TV. And any items that have already had a public hearing, you can fill out a speaker card for as well. But those will only be reopened if a council member moves to do so in the council assence. A last part of the meeting is also the general public comment section, which is available for two minutes of public comment on any item that is not on our agenda but nevertheless under the jurisdiction. We usually take that at the outset, though there are also sometimes some urgent items that will precede that. But we have that available too. Again, just fill out a speaker card, hand it to one of the sergeants-at-arms, and we'll be sure to get you in the mix. Pursuant to council rules, council members should be here at 10:00 a.m. to begin the meeting. It is now 10:07. I want to thank those council members who were here on time. Councilmembers Cardenas, Hahn, Parks, Reyes, Smith, Wesson, and Zine. We appreciate your timeliness. We're awaiting the following late council members to begin our meeting. Councilmember Wezar, Corretts, Labange, and Rosendahl. Mr. Alacone and Ms. Perry are excused today, and we do require 10 of our 15-member body or 14 members right now because of a vacancy to be present to begin our meeting. So if those members will still, will make their way down as quickly as possible, we'll be able to begin our meeting. I want to thank the public for their patience while we wait those council members again. Councilmembers Wezar, Corretts, Labange, Rosendahl, please join us right away. Thank you. Thank you again, everybody, for your patience. This is our third and final quorum call for councilmembers Wezar, Corretts, Labange, and Rosendahl. Councilmember Rosendahl, councilmember Labange, councilmember Corretts, and councilmember Wezar, you'll join us right away so we can have this meeting, otherwise we will have to cancel the meeting for lack of a quorum. Thank you. Madam Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Alacone, Cardenas, Hahn, Wezar, Corretts, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
If we can start the first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right. Mr. Smith moves, and Mr. Rosendahl seconds. Without objection, those will be approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Corretts moves, and Mr. Parks seconds. Without objection, those will be approved as well. We can run through the agenda, please.
And before beginning the regular agenda, there's a request to continue several of the items. Item number 14, a request to continue that matter for one week, and that would be October 7th.
Okay, colleagues, we're running through the agenda now. If I can have everybody's attention so we can run through the agenda together. October 7th, there's been a motion to continue, sorry, number 14, there's been a motion to continue to October 7th. Without objection, so ordered. Next items?
And there's a request to continue two of the closed-session items, item number 29 and actually 33, both for one week to October 7th as well.
Okay, without objection, we'll continue those until the 7th. Next items?
On the regular agenda, items noticed for public hearing. Item number one is a street lighting district item, and the Bureau has advised that that matter be received and filed for further action.
Okay. Any objection? If not, I'll move to receive and file. Without objection, number one. Next items?
Items 2 through 4 are street lighting district ordinances. I believe 12 council members will be present. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes, let's hold those on the desk. And we're still awaiting councilmembers Labange and Wezar to achieve our number for these ordinances. So as soon as they're here, we'll take them up. Next items, please.
Next items are building and safety items, and the Department has advised that on items 7 and 8, those two can be received and filed in as much as the liens have been paid on those two.
Okay.
And then that would leave before council items 5, 6, and 9 and 10 for confirmation of the liens.
Okay. Anybody wishing to call those special? If not, let's prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items 11 through 22. On item number 11, there is a new ordinance that has been distributed to the council. It's a technical correction on that.
Okay, we'll accept that without objection. And let's hold 11 and 12 on the table till we have 12 council members. Are there specials, colleagues? Mr. Parks, did you have one?
Yes, we held 16. We had some language on a modification and also special on 18 and 19.
Okay. Mr. Smith? 22 for Mr. Smith. Are there specials, colleagues? Seeing none, let's go ahead then and take up the balance, please. Please prepare the roll, and please tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Thank you. Thank you. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 23 through 28. 10 votes are required for consideration on those.
If there's no objection to consideration, we have those before us. If we can see if we have cards on any of these?
I believe there are cards on 24 and 27. That's what I have listed so far.
Okay, 24 and 27. We'll close the public hearings on the other ones. Anybody wishing to call specials on the balance? If not, let's prepare. For me? I'll call 26 special. That leaves us with 23, 25, and 28. If we can take those up, please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. And next items, please.
Next items, Mr. President, are the closed-session items. Items 29 and 33 have already been acted on, and that would leave before council 30, 31, and 32.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Parks?
We could handle 30 and 31 in open session. They're routine workers' comp issues.
All right. We'll move the settlements on those two. Why don't we go ahead and read those settlement amounts for items 30 and 31?
Item 30, and that settlement in the case of Marin, who's deceased, versus the City of L.A., and the settlement amount is $125,000 plus $5,000 burial expenses.
Okay. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
The settlement is approved. Next one, number 31?
Next one is 31, and that's also workers' comp, Anthony Silva versus the city. Settlement is $112,585 plus a life pension thereafter, weekly of $65.71.
Okay. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
We only have one in closed session.
11 ayes.
Okay, that is approved as well. We'll call 32 special, and if we can go to the continuation agenda, please.
That's item number 38, and that is an item for which a public hearing has not been held, and that is the E-RIP ordinance.
Okay, we'll call that special. This card from the public, and I'm sure we'll be discussing that as well. That will return us to our general public comment. We'll come back to the special meeting in a little bit. Dr. Clyde Williams is our first speaker for our general public comment. Again, there's two minutes per speaker and a clock there to help you guide your time, as well as our code of civility that is up there as well. Good morning, Dr. Williams, and after that will be Richard Kearns.
Good morning. My name is Dr. Clyde Williams, 4115 Barrett Road, El Sereno, Northeast L.A. State Route 710. We're still going around and around and around on it. Some individual council members have opposed Zones 1 and Zone 2, but nobody seems to worry about Zone 3, that is El Sereno and the southern portal. Ciudad supposedly was going to try to protect Los Angeles, but even the council persons and the mayor did not attend his announcement of the passage of SB 545. Not the signature, but the passage. So we're still quite concerned about it because it does not protect 200 houses in El Sereno. Yeah, there won't be any road on the surface, there won't be any road above the surface, but there will be a road below the surface and the portal, which will take about 6,000 to 7,000 feet. Supposedly, they were going to change it to relocate the portal south of a valley. That's all we want. Just have all of the excavation for the portal south of Valley. But not yet. I don't know where Mr. Wezar is today, but I would like to have him oppose any surface construction, any below-ground construction of the portal north of Valley Boulevard. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Williams. Richard Kearns is our next speaker. After that is Oscar Johnson. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, President Garcetti, distinguished council members. I've given the clerk copies of my prepared remarks. My name is Richard Kearns. I'm a 58-year-old gay man living with AIDS in Los Angeles for more than 20 years. I'm a long-term survivor and AIDS activist, a poet and journalist. I'm here today to talk with you about Havoc, the online HIV/AIDS volunteer virtual assisted care community that began publishing last week. Our aim is to assemble a body of both anecdotal and scientific knowledge to help prepare HIV-ers over 50 to enter and reform the assisted health care system. Havoc just published notes from studies on frailties and multimorbidities in HIV-ers and PWAs. It's dry reading, but since I've got a good number of them myself, I thought I'd show you how it works in a real-life person, me. HIV infection is associated with and a predictor of diverse impairments called frailty, which includes such conditions as myopathy, me, loss of muscle mass and weight, me, fatigue and exhaustion, me, cognitive dysfunctions, me, motor abnormalities, me, neuropathies, of course, osteoporosis, me, and physical shrinking, me. The prevalence of frailty in 55-year-old white, non-Hispanic, college-educated men, HIV-infected for four years or less is equivalent to that in uninfected men at age 65. Protease inhibitors, while saving our lives, trigger diabetes in many of us, me too. Then the big C, cancer. The incidence of cancers is higher among HIV-ers. This includes increased incidence of anal cancer, Hodgkin's lymphoma, prostate cancer, and skin cancer, me. That's what I've got all over my face. So this has been my little two-minute tour of what the whole comorbidity and frailty package looks like, something to think about next time you run across more statistics. And by the way, the Ryan White Healthcare Act sundowns today. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kearns. Oscar Johnson is our next speaker, to be followed by Arnold Sachs.
Good morning. Sir, the council, my name is Oscar Johnson. I speak for the press, and I speak for culture change. I'd like to thank God for President Barack Obama and his wife, Michelle Obama, because I think they are God's sent, and they really want to make a change in this country. And that's really here, how we saying about health care in the last years with Senator Ed Kennedy, but we haven't seen any formula about health care. And I have went to the internet, 9/26/09, and I went to the UC room, UC Newsroom, University of California Newsroom, and they have came up on the internet saying that since, they only went back to 1996, 182 hospital had closed up in Los Angeles in the last 13 years, and the hospital industry said that it had predicted there'd be 150 more state hospitals would close up in the next few years because of financial problems in the hospital. But our country tell us that our family is first, though, in our country. We look at our education have fallen, why not every three students do not finish high school? Our dropout rate in college is annoying. If we can fix our family situation in our country, we might can fix our education situation. If we can fix our education situation, we might can fix our job situation in our country, in our society. Our country said family first. That's something we have neglected. We need job training, we need job responsibility for our young black men that stand on the corner all day. We should find them jobs so they can find females to marry and they can support their family better. And not only our African-American females, but also other males that leaving their responsibility behind, see so many of our people going in the MR direction nowadays. We need to be, make our law enforcement more kind of business for the action. We have shared people shooting, killing unknown people.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
We should definitely, we should definitely kill it. Now, this is faster than two birds I ever seen.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments today. If there's anything else you'd like to give to the sergeant-at-arms, we'd be happy to take a look at it. It was, it's the same clock, we promise you. Arnold Sachs is our next speaker. After that will be Michael Hunt. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Arnold Sachs. Maybe you missed the discussion going on nationally regarding health care. I've sat in numerous meetings here where council has, agendaed numerous items regarding support for various proposed legislations, whether nationally or in a state. I'm somewhat shocked and disappointed that no leader in this council has stepped up to offer support for expanding the existing city's living wage ordinance. What a wonderful plan. You know, the president is looking for a national health care plan. The living wage ordinance eliminates health care for workers. Somewhat disconnecting between the two, but city council marches on. You're lucky if you qualify for the living wage ordinance, you'll get $1.25 instead of having health care. I believe there's a lot of workers in the taxi cab industry in this council chambers. I'd like all of them that have health care coverage because they work at the airport sometimes. Let them stand up and tell you about how their business is covered with health care. I see silence throughout the building for enrollment for the city's open health care program. Where does someone who's on the living wage ordinance sign up to take part in an affordable health care program? You had a presentation here on Friday for life insurance, a life insurance program. I'm waiting for the living wage ordinance health care program to provide information for the workers who are making a wonderful $1.25 an hour. Where can they go to find that affordable health care that the city council members have? Who do they look to? More leadership from the city council?
Thank you very much, Mr. Sachs. Michael Hunt is our next speaker. After that, we'll go out to Van Nuys, and Rick Nightengale will be our speaker after that.
First of all, I'd like to thank Channel 7 for running the Real Story yesterday at the 6 o'clock news. I checked with the FCC, and they said there was no regulations for cable. I'm going to go on an extensive meeting today with my attorney regarding my T-shirt and to make sure that it's fully protected. The truth sometimes hurt. And to the city attorney and the city council, I don't care if you appeal it, I just want to protest, and as long as you don't stop me from protesting, I don't care about the appeal. It's been going on so long, it doesn't even make a difference. So I'm not trying to astort or take any money. The only thing I want is my $500,000 that I won in a federal jury trial and that is due to me, and that's the only thing that I ask for in all due in fairness. I want it in a seven-panel jury, $500,000 for the city. Now, if the city would like to pay another $300,000, and I really want the tax people to know because they're really paying for it, another $300,000 that you guys have to pay to have my attorney at $700 an hour, and next year's rate will be $900 an hour. I mean, that's truly, truly on you guys, but like I said, I've never come in here and said in lieu of anything, and just like the lady in mediation said, she says you're going to end up paying the $500,000 anyway, and you're going to end up paying another $300,000, and it's perfectly legal. And whether you guys get it or not, I earned it fair and square. I didn't rob, steal, or kill anybody. It was a seven-panel jury in Dean-Peregrine Court.
Thank you. Just for the record, I too concur and spoke to the city attorney about that. None of the disruption that we referred to had anything to do with FCC regulations, which are correct, do not apply to cable. That was also, as the presiding chair, my opinion, and none of the actions taken yesterday were based on that. Rick Nightengale is our next speaker in Van Nuys, and then Chuck Tenen will be our next speaker here in council chambers.
Yeah, good morning, Rick Nightengale. I'll tell you, yesterday, boy, I'll tell you, these people that went and rioted down there, I appreciate you people turn around and stuck with it, you didn't take an agenda, dismissed the meeting and leave. I really appreciate that. I really get tired of this race, and so does everybody else, I'll tell you, even on cable TV. Everybody bringing up this race card all the time, they're really getting tired of it, and it really don't matter no more. Maybe a couple of years ago it did, but now they just shrug it off as a word like "and", because it's just gotten, every time somebody wants to make a point that is not white, and it's a race. It really gets old. It really gets old. And I'm sorry, the police are doing a good job down there because they are there to clean this place up. Another thing is, Tony Conarnas, I really appreciate you letting the Saff Crusade out here in Van Nuys. I really do. I was on the boulevard when it started, I was on the boulevard when it stopped. I'm a hot rod guy, and I've been driving, I was on the boulevard since 1959. So I really appreciate it. I hope everything goes all right, and we can still have it. Regarding this rooster deal, I thought you had to have, be in agriculture area to have a rooster. Now, I went over to my apartment building where we do have Hispanic people, and I've asked a lot of people why the Hispanic have to have a rooster, and I can't get a straight answer why it is. But if you are in agriculture area and so forth, you can't have a rooster in a regular home in a residential area. So I don't know why you people are bending over backwards to let these people to have a rooster. I don't know if you've ever been next to a rooster, crowing and all that. I have. I got one about three lengths of a football field from me, and I live in agriculture area, and I can hear it. So how would you like to live 50 feet away from somebody and hear that thing first thing in the morning? And against the 710 freeway, I hope it goes through. We're supposed to have it, and we should have it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker here will be Chuck Tenen in council chambers.
Good morning, President Garcetti, council members. Council members, you need to support Dennis Science Crusade to stop portable business advertising on wheels on the streets in our neighborhoods. I see them every day in the valley. It's on the rise. They're by neighborhood malls. It looks like a circus, gives the community a cheap look. They advertise business, make money, take away public street parking, and distract. After recent pipe breaks underneath our streets, like Coldwater Canyon and the sinkhole where the fire truck went down near Lowell Canyon in Magnolia, Paul Corretz had a meeting on damages to properties there, had a meeting with the DWP at the Sportsman's Lodge. I asked the DWP spokesman if they were related. He said he didn't think so. I asked him again, he changed it and said it may not, but we have no way of knowing. I added, how do you plan to inspect for safety to the community? He said they couldn't, only fix it when it happens. And big cities learn from smaller cities. In Bakersfield, I was up there, they gave away at no charge to the public emergency information, important numbers, fires, earthquakes, health, floods. Why doesn't the city give it away? I gave these to the council members. What a valuable tool and preparedness that can save lives. And finally, killings and gang violence among kids. I was in Alaska. It's on the rise. Third and fourth graders in a school back east made and sent me clothespins, made into dolls of all cultures to show that kids can get along. It was inspired from a song project inspired by Janice Hahn. Also, I'm working on, with the mayor's office, on an educational nature trips on the ocean for kids, so they can see our ocean and see the wonderful creatures there, and go away from violence and see that there's better things. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We do have some other cards that were put in. I know some of the taxi drivers put in cards. I want to, we have 19 called special already. Mr. Rosendahl is going to reopen the public hearing on that, so the public comment cards that folks said they wanted to speak in public comment, if it wasn't reopened, I'm going to put those in item 19 so you can be heard then on that item, okay? That will close our general public comment. Absolutely. That will close our general public comment. If we can take up the ordinances that we were calling special. Let's go ahead on items 2, 3, 4, 11, and 12.
And, Mr. President, just to let you know, our number 11, an amended motion, has been distributed regarding some qualified, or conditions that were not included in the original. I believe that can just be adopted as a friendly amendment.
We'll accept that as friendly. So let's take those up. Please prepare the roll on the three, five ordinances. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, those are approved. Next item called special, please.
First item called special, Mr. President, is item number 16, and that was called special by council member Parks.
Mr. Parks, item number 16 is before us.
Thank you, sir. I'd just like to make a verbal amendment to 16 so that we can ensure that we give the city clerk some flexibility to move forward with the hiring process, but that we add and insert a language that the city clerk, upon starting the process, shall submit workload statistics to the Managed Hiring Committee as justification prior to the position being filled.
Okay. Anybody else wishing to be heard on 16? If not, let's prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Okay, let's call the roll for the special meeting, please.
Alacon, Cardenas, Han, Wezar, Corretz, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weston, Zine, Garcetti, 12 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay. Okay, first items, please.
First items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items thirty-four through thirty-six.
Okay, we have cards on thirty-four and thirty-five. We'll call this special for cards in the public. Thirty-six will close the public hearing. Anybody wishing to call thirty-six special? Mr. Corretts?
When we approve this, I'd like to have it moved forthwith.
Okay. Let's prepare the roll and tabulate the vote on thirty-six.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, we'll send that forthwith without objection. Next item.
This one, Mr. President, on item number, excuse me, is number thirty-seven, and that is a closed session item.
Okay. Mr. City Attorney, we're going to take up three items together, including thirty-seven, since that's in the special meeting. How should we best proceed since we can't continue it into the regular meeting?
Council could, for the sake of the viewing public, could continue that item into the regular meeting and still allow public comment on item number thirty-seven.
Okay. Let's go ahead and continue that into the regular meeting then, if we can go back to the regular meeting. We will come back to the other special meeting items later, we'll readjourn that. If we can take up items thirty-seven together with twenty-sixth and thirty-eight. And I believe we have actuary to come forward. Mr. Parks, we have those three items on the E-RIP and the actuary today, so if I can toss it over to you so we can hear from the actuary on those? Okay? Okay, colleagues, what we'll do is I'm going to ask folks, there is a section of this that's closed, let's go back to the executive conference room, we have the actuary from part of the E-RIP stuff that we did, we do need to make sure that we hear and see if there's any questions. We'll come back shortly into the open session here to take up that portion, so if we can go back there quickly. Mr. Parks?
Single lead.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, if you can speak into the mic.
Thirty-seven is that we're going to close session on?
Yeah, we're going to question on thirty-seven and, no, sorry, not thirty-seven, thirty-eight. And is one of the closed, and thirty, yeah, just thirty-eight is what we're, and thirty-seven as well, I'm sorry. We'll do both those. Ms. Hahn? Oh, we have a card from the public on, oh, you want to continue it? Then we wouldn't hear the card. That's in the special meeting, we'll come back to that, okay? We've continued one item back into the regular meeting, but I'll make sure we do that next.
Yeah, I was just going to try to clear this off, so those that were here.
We can let folks know that we won't be taking that up, it will be continued, but since we'd have to call roll again, go back into the special meeting, we're in a different meeting. But anybody who's here for that, we will be continuing that, okay? So if I can, everybody in the executive chambers and everybody else from the public, sit tight here, we'll come right back, okay?
Yeah, I know. I know.
So this is thirty-seven.
Coming up now, here we go. We are back in session after the short executive session. Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, did you wish to take up item number 26, which is the actuarial?
Yes, number 26, please. If we can please have those individuals go to the center table. I think material is going to be being passed out to the council members. And Mr. Parks, you want to take over on this one?
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
You're welcome.
We'll have the actuarials come up at this time. Colleagues, if I understand the processes, basically, we've had this larger presentation at a prior meeting, but by state law, it's required that the actuarialist actually makes a presentation to us during the meeting that we actually vote. So this is a new meeting, and there has been some slight modification of the actuarial, and that is primarily where the presentation will spend its time on, is telling us what the new features are that changes the numbers somewhat. So let me ask you to kick that off for us. And you're going to be using this as a guide?
Correct. Thank you, Councilman Parks. My name is Paul Angelo with the Siegel Company.
Bring your mic up a little bit, please.
Of course. My name is Paul Angelo, and we're the actuary for lasers and for retained by the CEO's office for the City of Los Angeles. We prepared originally a report that was dated July 30th, 2009, which described the fourth iteration of the Early Retirement Incentive Program, or E-RIP. And in that report, there are five different groups. This is actually a review of our last conversation, five different groups, five different benefit amounts, and also two sets of numbers based on how many people actually take the E-RIP. Since that time, and this is now on slide three, there were modifications to the plan design, which were to increase the benefit for one of the groups by adding additional three years of service credit, and also to reduce the total benefit for all members under E-RIP by 1%. And so we revised our cost to reflect that in a report dated September 25th, 2009. And so at this point, you can really jump to slide six. Slide six shows, under the redesigned E-RIP, under alternative one, which would mean about 2,200 members would elect the program, the change in unfunded liability is about $228 million. This is a number that used to be about $250 million. So that's the reduction because of these changes in plan design. And the city's cost, that is, the cost of the city would pay to lasers over a 15-year period, is just under 1% of pay, 0.95% of pay. That number used to be a little above 1%, 1.07. The other numbers are, if a lot more members take the deal, then it would be a correspondingly higher cost. We've also had a lot of discussion about the fact that one of the parts of the agreement is that much of the funding for the E-RIP will come from additional member contributions. This is on slide seven. And so those contribution rates will differ from what you see in our actuarial report. The reasons are listed here. Member contributions are refundable if the member quits before they're vested. The timing is slightly different. And also, there are two other elements of the program that are not included in our employer cost report. One is the separation payments, which is around $40 to $50 million. And the other is the fact that one of the cost savings is that the members will take on the member contributions that are currently being defrayed by the city. If you go to slide eight, if you simply take the same numbers that we had before and make them into employer costs, sorry, into member costs, instead of 0.95, the additional cost would be 1.21. This would be if the members were paying the full cost of the E-RIP over 15 years. And you can see, if we put all those adjustments in, it's somewhere between 1.32 and 1.93. These correspond to the 1.3 and the 1.9 that we discussed at the previous meeting. However, if you go to slide nine, which is our last and sort of summary slide, the way that the cost is allocated between the city and the members is as follows. Under alternative one, the total cost of the E-RIP, that is, the lasers' benefit, is the $228 million, which we saw before. Here are the separation payments, which are cash payments over the first two years of $43 million. So the grand total present value today, this is not the actual cash, but a value today, present value today is about $271 million. Of that amount, if the members pay 1% for 15 years, that has a value today of about $189 million. This is all, again, as it values today. Then the deferral savings is an additional $22 million savings. You net those together, and the net value today of the city's cost is about $60 million. Now, this is very sensitive to how many people elect. Alternative two is somewhat misleading because there's a cap on the number of E-RIP members at 2,400. So this wouldn't actually happen, but this shows you how leveraged that is. But this gives you, I think, as clear as we can give you a sense of, in terms of value today, what's the value of the city's cost and what's the value of the members' contribution. That concludes our prepared remarks.
Thank you very much. Let me ask Miguel if you could come up and just advise the council as to the very important prospects of the letter of agreement, what the timeline is that, and how it plays into the timing of our vote today, and then our second vote and the ratification.
What we're asking you today is to adopt a new ordinance that reflects this new information from the actuary, and that clarifies that the time in which the members will be participating and contributing to this program is 15 years. In talking to our city attorney, they felt it was important to make it explicit, and so we concurred, and we'll be presenting in a few moments a new ordinance for your adoption. That means that your second reading will take place 30 days from today. In addition to that, we have amended the agreement to reflect those changes in the ordinance. These are minor technical changes. They do not change any part of the concepts or the principles that your council adopted just a few days ago.
And this, let me, just technicality. Does the slide presentation we've been given today, in effect, amend 26, which was the original actuarial study?
Yes, it does.
Okay. I'd ask that we attach this to the council file, so that it's amended as to number 26. And colleagues, I would also recommend strongly that we vote on this and get it done unanimously so that we can start the 30-day cycle for the second vote, and then start the ratification process.
Mr. Cardenas?
So the report that you're giving us today, can you reiterate what the main difference is between the report you gave us before and the one today?
The principal difference is the changes in the benefit design, which are that Group Two will receive an extra three years of service under the E-RIP, and also that, as a cost control measure, all benefits, the total benefits of the E-RIP members will be reduced by 1%. It's those two net effects that really are the differences in these numbers today.
Thank you.
Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you. I would move the number 38, then. We just have to receive and file, but I think it's good to attach as well to the council file, the actuary report, the actuaries' report, the actuarial report. And with that, move that forward.
Mr. Garcetti, we have a card on number 38, Mr. Sacks. Mr. Arnold Sacks on number 38. Arnold Sacks, are you here? Number 38, sir.
Thank you again, Arnold Sacks. Again, as I mentioned in my public comment, I bring forward the idea that you so fervently back, how come a living wage ordinance isn't invoked here as part of your plan to balance the city budget? Why not have city employees, who are certainly making more than the 10.25 or 11.25 that's allocated by the living wage ordinance, or even a new living wage ordinance that's paying 14.25? Why not have city employees cover their health care? You seem to have the right idea for the poor disenfranchised public that they can carry the burden of health care, that they can find affordable health care coverage for $4 an hour. What about city employees? Why don't you lead the parade? Your salary has doubled in less than 10 years, $187,000. Why not drop off a couple of bucks, cover your own health care coverage? Seems to me that you're so focused on trumpeting this living wage ordinance and how wonderful it is for employees that didn't get a chance to choose whether they wanted it or not, but it was just shoved down their throats, why not take the same action for the city? How much, Ms. Gruel, how much can we get a toll from the controller's office? How much does the city pay for health care coverage? How much would be saved in the upcoming budget deficit that would help the city get over that hurdle? Why not talk about that?
Madam Clerk, the items before us, the numbers?
Item number 26, Mr. President, it is just a receiving file, and actually, Mr. Parks just wanted something that was distributed to be attached to the file as well. And then on item number 38, that is the vote actually on the ordinance.
So we're going to vote only on 38?
Yes.
All right, on number 38. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you.
And that ordinance goes over for 30 days, and that would be October 30th.
Very well. We are completed with that item. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, and Mr. Actuary. We'd like to call the roll for the special meeting, please.
That's already been called, and council just recessed to go back to the regular meeting, and there were two items, item 34 and 35, that were being held on the desk. And I believe this council member, Han, had a request on number 34 to continue that.
Ms. Han, continue till when on number 34?
October 13th, please.
October 13th, without objection, October 13th for number 34.
And then number 35 is still on the desk, and that has cards.
Number 35. We have two cards on that. We should hear those, and then we can move on to the item number 19. Let's hear from the number 35, the individuals, number 35, Mr. Sacks and Mr. Hunt. Number 35, please.
Thank you again, Arnold Sacks. The city is going to consider cable television. After the fiasco that caused the city to lose its cable television studios, I know, you sent a letter to the state legislation. But we've already heard here in council chambers how you've acted on legislation that's already been passed after the fact. Look at what happened with the Good Samaritan law. You were acting on that, and the governor was signing the bill. But you were acting, so now you're going to act on cable television. What do we do? What kind of effort can be put forth by the council? There's a big stink regarding online televising, over the web. What kind of pressure can the city put on these broadcasters to bring back studios so the public can have access to other channels on cable television? You made such a big deal about how you stood up and disagreed with the state's legislation, the phonyous legislation, some of the phonyous legislation that the council hasn't come up with. You need to go back to class on that, that it would weaken, it would make the playing feel even by eliminating the need for studios for the new cable programs like Verizon. A lot of money changed hands on this deal, you can be sure of that. So again, what kind of pressure will the city council put on to have the public have more opportunity for cable access studio time? Thank you.
Michael Hunt. Mr. Smith?
Information, if I may, just for your ratification, the city of L.A. has joined a lawsuit with cities all over the country, and here in California, that are suing the state of California and the federal government on that point. So we have made a very strong commitment to fight that policy of the state of California.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Smith. Mr. Hunt?
Yes, this is a good one right here. I'm doing an in-depth investigation on what one of the council members said yesterday about the FCC and that cable communication for Channel 36, Channel 35 as well. It's been brought to my attention, and I'm not going to really speak on it until after I talk to all of my attorneys later on. But this type of communication, public access for community-based stations such as Channel 35 and Channel 36, to air all information that's available to the public as it comes in, and I don't want to dilute that, and I want to really keep it a First Amendment issue, long as it's a public forum. So with that, we really, really, really should protect the cable access and the corporations that actually film all community networks. But just be aware of that our attorneys are looking into it, and I can go further in depth with it on Friday when I see you.
That matter is now before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Mr. Cardenas? Fourth with on that, very well. We are now going to conclude the special, recess the special meeting.
Actually, that would be adjourn the special meeting and go back to the regular.
Very well. We have completed items in special. Let's go to the regular and bring up number 19, please. And Mr. Rosenbaum, we have a number of cards on 19. Would you like to hear from the public on this matter?
Yes, yes. Mr. President, we unanimously in committee moved on this action, but there's a good number of constituents here who want to be heard on it, so that's why we reopen this for public comment. First, I would like just for those folks to stand up. As you can see, there's a large contingent of cab drivers here that have opinions and a point of view. And colleagues, those of us in the committee, we went through a process, Mr. Labond, Mr. Carruthers, and Mr. Alec Khan was there, and Mr. Parks, as well as myself. Folks, have a seat. Thank you very much for that. So if I could ask Amir from the staff to come up real quickly and give us a thumbnail sketch of what the process was in the committee that unanimously moved forward.
Mr. Rosenbaum, do you want to do that, or do you want to hear from the?
I want the public to hear it first, and then we'll go right to that. Just a couple of minutes.
Then we'll hold the speakers. Okay.
Sure.
Go ahead, sir. Thank you.
Good morning, council members. Amir Sadadi, Assistant General Manager, L.A. DOT. The Department of Transportation, every 10 years or so, goes through a refranchising. The City of Los Angeles has had a franchising as a regulatory system for its transportation-for-hire program, and this particular franchising ends December 31 of 2010. So staff had sought advice and went through a process to bring a consultant to review a lot of programs and policies and peer review of other cities, and look at what our mission and core is, which is to have the best overall transportation-for-hire system in the city that is cost-effective, that is safe, that is clean, that is transparent, that is non-corrupt for all of the residents and visitors and all of you that take taxis in the city. So as this process has gone through, we have put together a scope of work, which was very extensive and well thought of, and included a lot of input from the different, all the different stakeholders, and that was put in place. There was some administrative disconnect with regard to the taxi commission's role, and we followed what the charter and what the mayor's executive order allows as far as the taxi commission being an advisory and not really being in the procurement and contract of this selection. And so we provided a lot of that information to the public and to the commission. However, a consultant was selected through the competitive bid process. We went through, what we were advised is the process where the mayor would approve then this contractor, and then the general manager would be advised to negotiate and execute a contract. So that's kind of the thumbnail version of where we are. The goal for the department is the same goal that the mayor and the city have, is to have the best taxi program for the City of Los Angeles. And it's very important for you to understand that this consultant is just looking at a myriad of toolboxes and options, looking at pros and cons of medallions versus franchising, looking at workers' comp for drivers, the conditions and health, and all of you would then make the final ultimate decision of what the future regulatory system would be. So this was just that look ahead for you.
Very good. And, Mr. President, if we could now have the public comment discussion, there are many cards to speak, but I think one group has organized like four or five people to speak, if they could come up, and if their cards could be read, and then the other side, a minute apiece, if we could do that?
There are approximately 25 cards at this time. We will give a minute apiece to the speakers. Do you have any preference on speakers?
Well, the question is, of the 25 cards, I think there's been some discussion that it would be unified. There wouldn't be 25 speakers, then? Okay. So? Okay, so we'll have seven? 10 minutes, each? 10 speakers? Okay. 10 speakers, one minute apiece, and there'll be 10 on one side. Well, we can't do the whole meeting.
Mr. Rosenbaum, we can give them a block of time if you wish. We can give a block of time. They can talk in that block of time. When the time's up, the time's up.
Sounds great, yeah.
Okay. We want to give them how much time? And within that block of time, they can make their comments.
Okay. All right, 15 minutes for each side.
All right. 15 minutes for each side, so whichever side is going to discuss, line up behind that representative, give your name, the company, and your statement. You're going to have 15 minutes on each side. That's 30 minutes total.
Our president was suggesting 10 minutes each, so make it 20, okay? 20 minutes, 10 on each side?
A 20-minute total.
Okay.
Okay.
So there's 10 minutes for each side? Okay. And that's how we'll do it, 10 minutes apiece? Yeah, just get in the group there.
Okay, we're done with the debate on the floor. We're going to start the conversation. Gentlemen, if you wish to speak, go ahead. We're going to start the clock now.
Please.
Go ahead, sir.
Good morning, council members. My name is Martin Manukyan from Yellow Cap Co-op President. First of all, I want to thank you all that you took it back, item number 19, for the discussion again. And at the same time, we do have a huge concern here. Therefore, those drivers are here, they are backing me up, as you can see. Would you please stand up? Last week, you made a decision for number 19 based on Latva's statement. Those are the drivers who are not Latva's members. Latva does not represent them at all. Soon as they find out the Transportation Committee, the number 19 came here and was such a decision, they come here to show their concern, that make sure you understand, this is not Latva's business to speak on their behalf, to make the decision on their behalf, and also to be number three, as you put it as a recommendation. Their request is just remove the number three recommendations for the 19 item. And also, we do request that we can take the number 19 back to the Transportation Committee. Why? Because those drivers were busy today, they didn't know what was going on, and they haven't heard anything about the number 19 discussion, and they'd like to revisit the issue again if you could give them a chance. Thank you so much, and hopefully you will consider this.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. The gentlemen, you're using up your time by applauding, and you're limiting the speakers from speaking. You have a 10-minute total, and when you're applauding, you're using up the time, so you're doing yourself a disservice. Your name, sir?
Thank you for the time you're giving me, ladies and gentlemen. I'm working for Yellow Cap.
Your name, sir?
Jano Youssefi.
Thank you.
I'm driving for the last 15 years for Yellow Cap. They never represent us, they never be part of us, and they keep coming to you guys, lobbying you guys for telling you the different story with what's actually happening. As a Yellow Cap driver, I represent myself, and the company of Yellow Cap is my representative. Please, could you make sure they put a stop on that and give a wrong comment, wrong stuff to you guys, which is they give you two different-minded? What I want for the Yellow Cap to represent us, nothing else. Thank you for your time.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, sir. My name is George Iordash, and I am representing Bell Cab Company. I'm a taxi driver operator. I want to mention the same thing like my previous guy. Mr. Hamid Khan didn't represent us. Latva is not part of us. I don't need somebody to manage my life. I choose Bell Cab. I worked at different companies before, and then I decided to remain to Bell, and I am responsible for my facts, and I don't need help for Latva. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Georgia Poku, and I've been driving a taxi for over twenty years, and I'm working for a company, which is the management, and nobody represents me. I want the management continue to do their good work. Thank you.
My name is Steven Matosowski, and I've been driving taxi cab almost sixteen years. These sixteen years, I've been enjoying two companies, which is Independent Company and Yellow Cab. And all of this year, I'm enjoying to work with these companies. But why I'm enjoying, because the way the infrastructure is built here in this company, and I am, as owner operator, pretty much satisfied with the way our infrastructure works, like any other corporation. We have management, president, vice president, officers, and board, and most of it, we have companies by law and rules, which we are following. Latva is not representing me, nor my fellow taxi cab drivers. We are happy the way things going right now with our business, and we don't want to have any changes. And please, who's not supporting Latva, stand up. Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Mohamed Feroz. I want to just come on here to give a message that...
Sorry, we'll pause your time. What was your name again? I'm sorry?
Mohamed Feroz.
Thank you, sir.
And I'm here just to give a message to everyone that Latva, Hamid Khan, is not representing us, from our cab drivers and our fellows, our friends. I spoke to so many drivers and so many friends, that nobody wants any kind of management that Latva is trying to do. We are very happy with our management, and we don't want additional, any problems. Latva never helped us, never gave us any chance to do anything, so we are very happy with our management. Thank you, sir.
Before my time is started, please, I would like...
Will you move the microphone down a little closer? Thank you.
Before my time is started, I would command with all due respect for all the members...
Would you say your name for the record, sir?
My name is Khalil Haydaniya.
Thank you.
I want everybody to pay attention, please.
You have it, sir. Go ahead.
Okay. My name is Khalil. I'm an architect from Lafayette, Louisiana. I've been in this industry of taxi more or less whenever it was needed, for the last thirty years. I understand the industry. I am not a part of the Latva, and I would like this contract to be modified, because there might be some people who, so-called monkey business, has been all over. I'm against that. I have been experienced that the owners, some owners and drivers, they don't have a decent life. And then I mathematically calculate, sometimes they make two dollars an hour, or maybe less, and they need healthcare and what have you and what have you. I want to appreciate the Department of Transportation, because they've been doing very good job, and they've been improving. Without them, it'd be a lawland for the safety of the public and what have you, so-called all of that. I would support maybe medallion transitional to a point where they have a decent life and what have you, with supervision of the department somewhat. And so, basically, that's it, and I really appreciate it. And these people are sitting over the locket dock, and there are some airport police, you know, giving a hard time, and a lot of them, they had heart attack, they died. I know some people. Okay? I thank you very much. Please make sure they have a decent life like you do. Thank you.
My name is Alex Horami. I'm driving for the Yellow Cab for a long time, and I'm very happy with the management of the Yellow Cab. I don't know anything about the Latva, and I don't know who they are, from there they come, and they are not representative of us. So I appreciate from my company, and I want the company to strive with my management. Thank you.
Good morning. Michael Kaelin. I would simply like to bring to your attention that, for the first time after what was passed in the Transportation Committee, this large group of drivers chose to come down here in front of you and tell you the fact that they are not represented by Latva, who claims to represent, I don't know, eighty percent of the drivers in the city. There would have been way more, but they're out there earning a living, picking up passengers. If need be, probably you would have two, three thousand of them in here, although I don't think they can fit, so please take that into consideration. Thank you.
My name is Boris Rosman, and I'm with Los Angeles Taxi Cab Company for twenty years. I've been driving many years. I was chairman of the board, almost ten years, and I'm board member and one of the major stockholders. We're not represented by Latva in any way. And, as a matter of fact, when I was trying to get some information whom they're representing, I couldn't get any. We are extremely happy with our Department of Transportation, how they're handling this matters. It's a good department. It's serious people trying to help us in today's economy in any possible way. We don't need any extra representation besides our companies. We are happy the way you are, and please make right decision. Thank you very much.
My name is Philip Burton, and I'm with City Cab. So I have been working with City Cab for almost nine years. I'm happy with my company. I don't know who they are or Latva, and I'm happy with it. So please, let us stay with us like this. Thank you.
Thank you. That'll be all the time. I'm sorry for that side. I'm sorry, that's all the time we have, the ten minutes for that side. We'll go to the other side now. We'll make sure that everybody's names are entered into the record on that, but we'll now go for folks from the other side, if they want to come forward, from, I guess, the Latva folks, if they want to come forward now for the next ten minutes. And then, we're going to hear from the other side now for ten minutes. We had ten and ten, and as many people as we could get, but unfortunately, the timer just ended, so, sorry, sir. I'm not sure which group you're with, but I think the other folks are going to go now. We ran out of time for... I know, we were not going to get to everybody's card. Are you...
He's on the other side.
Are you with Latva, sir?
I'm not, sir. I'm independent. I'm very supportive of Latva.
Okay, okay, go ahead. If you're on the other side, whether you're with Latva or not, go ahead. Why don't you start, and then the next one? Go ahead. You start, sir. Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
You're going to get a chance to speak?
Yes, right now, you get to speak. Go ahead. Please speak.
You've got a card.
No, no, I said, right now, please speak, sir.
You're letting me speak?
Yes, I am. I'm saying, right now, speak.
I'm David Shapiro.
Thank you, Mr. Shapiro.
And I'm the founder of the movement thirty-two years ago, which had the strength, after seven years, seven months, of all the taxi drivers of that era, to break through the Teamster, Yellow Cab dominant monopoly over all the cities, and here of forty-two years. And I speak today to thank Rosenbaum and his committee for revolutionary withdrawal of this contract. But, there are two things I want to say here today. The franchise interests of yellow have, for twenty-eight of my thirty-two years, dominated horribly the politics of this hall. It's a revolutionary beginning with you and you, Mr. Garcetti. And I want to say about that monopoly, to tell it all. They, under Mitchell Rouse and his family, Mitchell Rouse, goes to political campaigns and pays for them, not just ordinary contributions. And in the case of the last transportation chairperson, he either wholly paid for, or at least in a dominant part, the preliminary studies of the candidate for city, of the chairman...
We'll have order in these chambers. There'll be no yelling?
That has to be said.
Hold on, sir.
And the press was concentrated on this, and any of you who are thinking of continuing that history...
There will be no yelling, or people will be expelled. Regardless of whether you agree or not with what's being said, we will protect public comment, and that'll be the last warning for anybody on either side. We will have decorum in these chambers.
Good afternoon. Can our time start now?
Go ahead, you're on.
Our ten minutes, you know, he was independent.
The head's started already.
Oh, okay. My name is Sintaiyus Alasi. I'm from Los Angeles Taxi Workers Alliance. Actually, the point here is not membership issue. The point is here today, what accountability and transparency and good governance. We are asking for fairness, nothing else. So, membership staff, when it comes, will prove, we already signed fourteen hundred signed supporters. We don't want to go through that. If you guys want to, we can show you a pile of papers, supporters. These drivers are ordered by the companies. If they say no, you know what happens to them. Anyway, if you individually ask them, they will tell you the truth, how they got here. And all I ask is just fairness. I was in San Francisco September first and second for International Taxi Workers Alliance. After I told them what happened to us here, they told us, you are in the six, in deep south, in the sixties. Please, bring us up to date by approving this thing. Thank you very much.
Good morning, chamber of this... My name is Hamid Khan with the L.A. Taxi Workers Alliance. Today, we're not here for a popularity vote about the Los Angeles Taxi Workers Alliance. Today, we are here to talk about good governance, we are here to talk about transparency, and we're here to talk about accountability in government. So what happened is that a contract was gifted as a back-room deal without following the process that was set up. We want to do a referendum or popularity about Latva, that's a separate issue. So we want to thank Councilmember Rosenbaum and the Transportation Committee for upholding transparency, upholding accountability, and holding our bureaucrats responsible. Thank you again very much, and please go ahead and vote on the motion. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Betty Hung. I'm with the Inner City Law Center here on behalf of the L.A. Taxi Workers Alliance. We appeal to the City Council as stewards of the public trust and ask you to uphold the Transportation Committee's recommendations and directive to the L.A. DOT to terminate the contract with Nelson Nygaard. Because of the irregularities in the contracting process, it is undisputed that the L.A. DOT did not follow the public process that was promised. They sidelined the Taxi Cab Commission, and they also never reported back to the full City Council with the recommended consultant, despite a City Council motion passed on November eleventh, two thousand, November eighteenth, two thousand and eight. They ignored the City Council directive and had no public hearings before awarding the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar contract to the same consultant who helped the city create the taxi system that currently exists. And so we really question, at this time of fiscal crisis, why two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars was, contract was awarded to the same consultant to scrutinize the very taxi system that he helped create. Moreover, this consultant has close ties to taxi company management, who drivers have long complained are the source of their poverty conditions. So we ask you to restore the public trust and faith in city government and uphold principles of transparency and integrity.
Hello. My name is Gray Palmer, and I'm a member of Los Angeles Taxi Workers Alliance. We thank the Transportation Committee for their unanimous vote to cancel the contract with Nelson Nygaard, because of the reasons Betty Hung just spoke of. Also, I would like to say, hi, I would like to say that our position was supported at the Transportation Committee meeting by our friends from AFL-CIO Clean Car Wash Campaign, SEIU Local eighteen-seventy-seven, AFSMI Number Thirty-Six, Koreatown Immigrant Workers Alliance, Green L.A. Transportation Working Group, UCLA Labor Center, UCLA Labor Occupational Safety and Health, and the National Lawyers Guild. We're proud to have these supporters, and we have fourteen hundred signed taxi driver members of Los Angeles Taxi Workers Alliance. Thank you.
Again, this will be the last warning, and I'll ask the guards to expel anybody who is shouting out. We will have decorum. It was given to you, and it will be given to all of our speakers, and I will ask the guards now, they have permission, to throw anybody out who is shouting. Please, freedom of speech is something wholly to protect and to respect, even when you disagree with what is being said. Go ahead.
Yes. Thank you, council members. My name is Gary Vogon, and I have been a driver since nineteen eighty-eight. And I just want to say, I want to thank the committee for upholding transparency in City Council affairs. I've heard the other side, and they made a good point. This issue is not about Latva. It's about accountability. It's about the undermining of a competitive bidding process, which was undermined by a backdoor deal. That's what this issue is about. This is about the rights of cab drivers, and it's about the public's right to know. And I want to commend you for upholding transparency in public government. The other side wants to maintain the status quo. You've heard a lot about what's happened to cab drivers, drivers who've worked for decades in this business with absolutely nothing to show for it. This is a law for justice, and we thank you.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, council members. Julie Su with the Asian Pacific American Legal Center. I just wanted to add that Councilmember Parks said rightly at the Transportation Committee meeting, where it was unanimously voted to terminate the contract with Nelson Nygaard, that what gave rise to the issuance of an RFP for a consultant was a UCLA study that found that the current structure is fraught with opportunities for self-dealing and a lack of financial transparency. Now, whether or not that's true, the city is now charged with hiring a consultant to examine what is going on in the taxi industry, what can be done better, and what kind of industry would best serve the people of Los Angeles, as well as the drivers who work so hard to keep the city moving. What Councilmember Rosenbaum and Councilmember Carruthers also rightly noted at the meeting is that government is about transparency, and the way that the consultant contract was initially given violated the transparency that was stated in the RFP itself, the process that it was supposed to go through. So we come before you now as part of going back, fixing the problems, and doing it right this time, so that we can really get a consultant who can take a critical look at the problems in the industry, who can take the input of the folks who are here, including those with whom we disagree, and to really, really put this city on a track to a just, green, and twenty-first-century taxi system. Thank you.
I'm Mark Masaoka, Policy Coordinator for the Asian Pacific Policy and Planning Council. We're an association of forty community-based Asian Pacific organizations, including the South Asian Network, Korean Immigrant Workers Advocates, and the Asian American, the Asian Pacific American Legal Center, who invited us here today. Because we are in favor of transparency, public disclosure, and the right of taxi drivers and the public whose lives are affected by the decisions you make, we believe that we have the right to have a voice in these decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. That will, unfortunately, that's all the time for that side as well. We do have one card from a general public comment on this, neither for nor against, from Arnold Sachs. I'm sorry, sir, we had to be as fair as possible, it's ten minutes for each side. My apologies. But we'll make sure that we get all the cards and the names of everybody else in.
Good morning. Arnold Sachs. Transparency in this contract, administrative disconnect. What is administrative disconnect, and how does it affect transparency? Is that going to be considered by the Rules Committee of the City Council? There was an item I brought forth at the committee meeting regarding a tax case that was brought by one of the workers. There seems to be a lot of pro and con here between two different sides. Investigate the tax case. If the worker is right, then that adds some substantial backing to their side. If the worker is wrong, then it detracts from their argument. But has the city, has the Taxi Cab Commission, has anybody, L.A. DOT, looked into the argument, looked into the committee? Waiting for an answer. Don't you need to act on a federal lawsuit?
Thank you, Mr. Sachs.
And I want to thank all the cab drivers who came here today to express the democracy at its best, your point of view and your positions. I've heard it, and so has the committee. We were very much concerned about openness and transparency, and doing the right thing, and letting everybody into the discussion. So with that in mind, instruction number three, which said instruct the L.A. DOT to solicit comments, instead of just saying to Los Angeles Taxi Workers Alliance, we're going to say to solicit comments from stakeholders on consult and consent on the scope of work and possible vendors. In other words, there's no one group that's going to be the preference. But I want to make it completely clear. We, as a council, are totally there on transparency and openness, and we want every point of view presented as we go through this process. So colleagues, if I could make that verbal emotion on number three, instruct the L.A. DOT to solicit comments from stakeholders on the consultant's scope of work and possible vendors, if I could have a second on that.
I second that, yep.
Second by Mr. Caretz. And with that amendment, which respects you very much and says we're all in this together, I would like my colleagues to go forward with this action. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Parks is our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want, you know, I think everybody, and I was at the committee, and I've probably sat through more of these committee meetings than I'd like to acknowledge, but I think we need to clarify a couple of things. I think we all want transparency, but I don't want to see L.A. DOT criticized unfairly. L.A. DOT followed the directions of the council and made at least two attempts to get this issue before a committee, and they were rejected and scheduled it. They then, because of the issue of timing, went forward on this issue, the RFP. So we want to clarify what they did and what they didn't do, and when they don't do well, we criticize them, but I don't think they deserve unfair criticism, because they did make that attempt. And I think, having gone through this, and we can see from the separation of the arguments here, and we hear it in committee, even more graphic, I think we're going to be prepared that if we go after RFP again, and this company becomes the only or sole person that applies, or becomes the best organization, that it's going to put us in the same box several months down the road, to where we're going to be people competing and contesting the organization. Because I think it'd be unfair if we sent a message today that they can't apply, and they can't participate, or they're not going to get due consideration. So several months down the line, we may be considering this again with the same comments that this company, in some people's eyes, is biased, and other people's eyes, it's not biased. But we need to be prepared, if they're the only one that applies, where will we be with Plan Two at some point, because these same arguments will be there. So I just think we have to be prepared for it, but I just don't want to see L.A. DOT criticized for something that they were attempting to do, the business and direction of the council, but did not get a cooperation with the committee that oversees them, and they went forward with the direction.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Caretz is our next speaker.
Well, I don't think this action should be seen as a yes or a no vote on the actual contractor. This action was an action based purely on the process, and I think it sends an important message to the city. I think it sends an important message to our residents. And I think it sends an important message to our staff, and I hope they've heard it loud and clear. This is a different era. We are going to be a transparent city hall. Nothing that looks like a backroom deal, whether it is or not, and I don't think it was, but perception is important, and it's time that we are perceived as an open and transparent city. And so, we laid out a process. We followed a largely different process. I don't think we did it for any nefarious reasons, but I think it's a process that has to change. And by sending this back, we are saying, no more of this, even if there was a good reason, even if city staff wanted to move expeditiously and for good reasons, we're not going to see any of this anymore. So I asked my colleagues to vote for this unanimously. There's no guarantee that we won't wind up with the same contractor. It's an open process. They have a lot of experience. They have their arguments on both sides of that issue. But I'm proud of the fact that we expended a little money, but I think in the long run, giving a clear direction to the city that this is now going to be a city that does things the right way, I think makes it all worth it.
Thank you. That is our last speaker on the queue. As amended by Mr. Rosenthal, we have the proposal before us, the recommendation of the Transportation Committee. Can you please open the roll on that recommendation? Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. That will be reset. Thank you very much. If we can take the next item, if we can go to number 24 next, please, and we'll take a card from the public on that first. Dr. Clyde Williams, if you'd like to come forward on item number 24. Okay. There's some folks leaving, but Dr. Williams, please, we can hear you, and I know they can hear us on TV, so go ahead, please.
Dr. Clyde Williams, 40115 Barrett Road, El Cerrano. It's not common that I would support DWP, but in this particular situation, I think the proposed motion is wrong. In some ways, it's kind of stupid, sorry to say. Fluctuations. Every water system in the world undergoes fluctuations, night and day, fire flows, spatial events. Even the Super Bowl was noted in some people's distribution systems because of the fluctuations of variations of water pressure. Holidays often have a considerable impact upon the fluctuations. However, I strongly disagree with focusing on water conservation as being the reason why the fluctuations may have caused ruptures. Modify the motion to require an immediate risk assessment of the probability of rupture and the consequences of ruptures, and focus a good network replacement program on those areas which have the highest consequences of realized risk. There's GIS. We had a GIS 30 years ago in Cairo, Egypt, a city of 9 million people at that time, and we recognized where pressures were and such. It's not new technology. I disagree that GIS has only recently been available to do such, and it has been probably good systems for over 20 years, but DWP hasn't used them. So, please revise the motion, focus it on an immediate risk assessment to our pipeline networks and the supply of even El Cerrano. We noticed when they ruptured that we had reduced flow. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Williams. We'll go to the vice chair of our Energy and Environment Committee first, Mr. Cardenas, as our first speaker.
Thank you very much. If we could have the staff from DWP come forward, we have some questions on the report, if you could help clarify. You've given us a report called "The Status of L.A. DWP Pipeline Infrastructure," dated September 2009, which I'm assuming is the most updated report you have since we're still in September. First, I'd like you to please remind the residents of the city of Los Angeles and the people who depend on the Department of Water and Power. How many connections or people do we service, businesses do we service? Just use round figures, if you don't have the exact number.
Well, let me first say, good morning. Councilmember Cardenas, President Garsetti, members of the city council, and thank you for this opportunity to appear before you. My name is David Nahai. I serve as the General Manager and CEO of the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power. With me is Jim McDaniel, who's the Senior Assistant General Manager in charge of our water system. In terms of the total number of customers which the water system services, it totals 680,000.
So 680,000 connections, as some people might call it. Now, one of them, those connections, for example, I think we have the largest brewery this side of the Mississippi, right here in the San Fernando Valley. That's a big customer, right? But they're one customer, correct, at that location?
Yes.
Right. I'm getting to a point. But also, there are customers that are just like one household, like one family, and that's a connection as well, but it's a smaller connection, correct? But both of those examples are one customer.
Correct.
Okay. So you're responsible for making sure that whether it's a big customer like Anheuser-Busch or one household, your responsibility is to make sure that the water flows, and when people turn on their faucet, or turn on their machines, or what have you at Anheuser-Busch, that the water flows and that their connection is good, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So in between all of these households, we get water from where? What are our main top three sources, and are all of them right here underneath us, or are some of them far, far away?
Well, 85% of our water approximately comes from far, far away, through aqueducts that run a hundred.
How much percentage?
About 85%.
So that means for every 100 gallons that we deliver to our customers, 85 out of 100 gallons that we deliver to our customers comes from far, far away?
Yes, you can think of it that way.
Okay.
From the eastern Sierras, from the Colorado River, from the Sacramento Delta. And approximately 15% comes from our own indigenous resources, but that fluctuates as well, sometimes a little more, sometimes less.
Okay. Now, with that means that we have large pipes and small pipes that are under your responsibility, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Now, underneath our feet, as shall I say, within the city limits, give me an example of how big does one of our biggest pipes get that we have to maintain and make sure that they work properly and they don't cave in or what have you? And give me an example of a pipe that might be in your average residential street. How big is that pipe?
Well, some of our biggest pipes go up to 96 inches in diameter.
96 inches, and in feet, that would be eight?
Yeah, eight, about eight feet. Eight feet in diameter.
Okay. So about eight feet wide, so about this wide. If I stood in it, I would have to reach up to touch it.
Right.
Okay. And then our smaller pipes?
And then smaller pipes in streets, six and eight inch mains in a residential street.
So six or eight inches, maybe about this wide. Okay. Now, with that, this report has to do with pipeline infrastructure and basically focusing mainly on ruptures, where all of a sudden, oops, we've got water flowing out of a pipe. And recently, there's probably a picture that I actually saw in a business on the counter just a couple of days ago, where there was a fire truck that was halfway into a street of water. It's going to be an infamous picture, unfortunately, that's going to be around for a long, long time. So that incident had to do with a pipe, right? A pipe had given way, and as a result, water spilled, et cetera, and then you had to go fix it.
Correct.
Okay. Now, not all incidents are all that dramatic. I would imagine most of what happens when you're fixing pipes or what have you are not very dramatic, it's just part of your everyday business, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So on any given day, about how many pipes are being worked on? Either preventative, or oops, they burst, now we've got to run out there and fix it right away? On an average day, or week, or what have you?
On an average day, we'll have about four to five breaks in an average day.
Four to five breaks. And then on top of that, we still have ongoing preventative activity going on.
Of all.
Preventative, meaning that the pipe hasn't broke yet, we've identified that the pipe is very, very old, we better get to it before it breaks, right?
Correct. That would be considered a mainline replacement project.
Okay. About how much of that goes on on a given day? How many locations?
I've got about 14 different crews working on that, so you can say 14, although sometimes we double up a crew on a bigger job, but that gives you an idea.
Okay. So on an average given day, we might have a dozen to 20 different spots being worked on as far as pipes?
More like 10 to 14 different places where we're working on new pipes.
But to put things into perspective, about how many miles of pipes, small and large, do we have in the city?
We have about 7,200 miles of pipe total in the city.
7,200 miles of pipes.
Right.
And at any given time, one specific point amongst those 7,200 miles could actually break or need service, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. How in the world do you manage that? How do you go about trying to figure out how to be preventative, how to make sure that you're there when things break, and then just keep water flowing?
Well, we have to make sure that we have adequate resources in our water distribution group, which takes care of that sort of thing. On top of that, we have an ongoing asset management program, which is looking at the condition of the pipe, leak history, soil conditions, age, a number of different things, and we prioritize pipe replacements based on those factors.
Okay. I'm going to ask you a couple more questions. The first question is, you said you have about 14 crews to work on the preventative work. Is it realistic for, as Angelinos, for us to expect the Department of Water and Power of Los Angeles to just say, let's hire 1,000 crews in 2009, and just do all the preventative maintenance and fix all the breaks as quickly as possible, and then in 2010, be, wow, we're done with that, we don't have to do it for another 20 years? Is that realistic?
I think the part of the pipe replacement program also looks at the issue of disruption to our residents. Yes, you could arguably blanket the entire city and have work going on everywhere, and you choke traffic, and kids wouldn't be able to get to school and so on. So those are important considerations. I think with respect.
So it's not realistic just to say, well, let's just knock this thing out in one year, and then just get like 1,000 crews out there and just, you know, just work on it like heck for one year, and then kind of be done with it? So it's not realistic to do that, correct?
I think it's an interesting idea, but held up to scrutiny, I don't think it would be practical.
Yeah, it wouldn't work, because you just brought up a very practical, real thing that people would probably storm City Hall and find out where DWP is, and storm DWP, and just be outraged, because we wouldn't be able to move traffic-wise, business, people going to school, to and from work, et cetera. That would be a tremendous, tremendous hindrance to people just to be able to get out of their neighborhood or go wherever they're going if we did something like that. So my point to you is, I'm glad you answered it that way, because you're basically making my main point. My main point is, the Department of Water and Power doesn't have a magic wand. Your responsibility is to make sure that you take your customers into account and all kinds of other factors that are beyond your control, which is, you really wouldn't be given permission by the city council, the mayor, or anybody in the city to go ahead and have 1,000 crews out there every day for a whole year, even if you wanted to, correct? It's not realistic.
And with that point made, I would also add that our numbers, though, speak for themselves, councilmember. You know, our record in terms of leaks per mile is much better than other comparable cities. And so, the pipeline replacement program that Jim and his people are pursuing is working, and it provides us with a record that is, quite frankly, the envy of others, and we've won prizes because of it.
Well, based on that point, I need to ask you this question, which I think the answer is obvious. Even though we're doing better than most jurisdictions, certainly of our size, or per mile, or what have you, are you satisfied with that, or are you trying to make it better?
We always strive to provide the best possible service to the people of Los Angeles, so we always want to do better.
Thank you, and we want you to as well. And so, my last point is this, I'm glad you brought up the chart, because I was going to bring it up about, for example, in the 1920s, we had close to 300 leaks per 100 miles, and now we're down way below 50 leaks per 100 miles, according to this chart right here in your report.
We're below 20.
Leaks per 100 miles. It's one of the last ones in red. So my point is, again, I'm glad that you said that it's not exactly that you're satisfied with it, but you know that we are doing a pretty darn good job, that your department's doing a pretty darn good job. I point that out, not as a complaint, I point that out to say that you have been very mindful of your responsibilities, and you are on the lower end of leaks per 100 miles. But the odd thing about it is, in the 1920s, with 300 leaks per 100 miles, the system was only a couple of decades old.
Yeah. The graph that you're referring to, and I apologize for This, the graph that you're referring to, and I apologize for not realizing which graph you were referring to at the beginning. This is a graph showing the leaks per 100 miles based on when the pipe was installed. So this is showing you that the pipe that was installed in the 1920s--
Okay.
--basically has the highest leak rate.
Okay, thank you. All right. So on that note, so the bottom line is, I was actually going to make a point, which you led into it, and that is that we have pipes that were built in the 1900s, 1910, 1920s, et cetera. So we have pipes over 100 years old and we have a bunch of pipes that are easily, the majority of them are over 50 years old.
Correct.
So which means today's burden of running the department is a lot harder today and a lot more demands on the maintenance than it was 50 years ago.
That would be--
Right? Because you have a lot more older pipes. One last point, Mr. President. I just wanted to ask you one last question. This report, are you in the process of making it more involved and getting more answers or these are pretty much all the answers that you have to give?
Oh, no, these are not all of the answers. We're engaged in a very intensive effort at this point to investigate the causes of the ruptures that we've been seeing, even though they are within historically normal ranges, but we want to get down to the bottom of why this is happening. So this is an ongoing effort internally and we've engaged outside experts from USC, Cornell, and JPL, with whom we have a memorandum of understanding, to help us in this effort as well.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to make sure that the people of Los Angeles who are watching this understand that it's easy to complain about a department, it's easy to complain about things, but at the same time, it's a lot more complicated than just the one pipe that happens to burst around the corner from your home. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts.
Yeah, it's obviously not the intention of DWP, but I'm starting to feel a little put upon as the council member in the 5th District where a lot of the more spectacular water main blowouts have happened and are continuing to happen.
We always do that to the new guy, Paul. We all went through it, so.
Well, I don't remember another district having so many of these historically. The Coldwater one was in my district, the Laurel Canyon area sinkhole. We just had one at Fairfax and San Vicente. You know, I'm starting to tell my staff to systematize our response to these because they seem so regular. And we discussed a couple times, and this motion addresses it, the possibility that this could be caused by the changes in our water use patterns based on our water conservation. Now, when it was discussed in committee, the experts sort of poo-pooed the idea, didn't really seem to give it serious consideration. So I want to hear from you all that this really is getting serious consideration and that we're looking at every possibility. I also want to say, one other theory that was given to me was that we've changed our patterns in terms of heavy vehicles on city streets. We used to have a lot more signage saying that over a certain number of pounds, I think it was 6,000 pounds, vehicles couldn't drive on some of our commercial streets and residential streets. And that those signs are removed and we're really not enforcing that much and that also could have an impact. So I wonder if you could speak to those comments.
Well, let me first say that as a 30-year resident of the 5th District, I too am beginning to feel put upon perhaps, but I assure you that this has nothing to do with the 5th District.
I didn't think so.
I think, you know, at this point, unfortunately, theories abound. A gentleman stopped me just outside council chambers to push a particular theory that he felt that had to have serious consideration. But I do want to emphasize that far from poo-pooing, you know, any of the possible ideas that have been put forth, including, you know, different kinds of surfacing materials on streets or different machines or water conservation measures and so on, we believe that our experts and as well as internal DWP people will look at all of those because questions will be posed. Did you take a look at this and what kind of conclusions did you read? So it's incumbent on us to, I think, exhaust all possibilities within reason. And we don't want to dismiss any particular possibility. On the other hand, we want to be very careful not to feed conjecture either because that's not going to be helpful to us and what we do ask the council for is adequate time to enable DWP experts and the outside panel of experts that have been assembled to do their work in an atmosphere that enables true and reliable conclusions to come out. But we are doing that work.
Thank you. Thomas Joseph Labonge is next.
Oh, thank you very much, Mr. Garcia. What's your middle name?
Michael.
Michael, Michael Garcia, I'll get that down there. Good job there. Mr. Nahai, Mr. McDaniel, no one's been hurt as of yet on any of these, correct?
Correct. That's correct.
So that's very important. I wanted to ask you another important question, though. Engine 60, is the Department of Water and Power going to play to replace that fire engine that fell in the street? I need to know that because the firefighters out there at 60s, they want to counsel them. You're good friends with Water and Power.
Let me answer the question this way, which I'm sure you expect. There is a legal process that we have to go through and until that process is completed, it would really be wrong of me to say anything on the issue because--
All right, but if it was a city street and if it was a hole in the middle of the city street, it was your pipe and it went through it, it was a city truck that fell in there, a city fire truck, you would be obligated probably to take care of it, right? Logic would tend to go that way.
Can I ask you to please let me off the hook here and not let me stray into legal discussions about--
Off the hook and ladder, very good, Janice Hahn, she's very good. All right, but look at that because I think it's just something important, mostly that no one got hurt. I'd like to ask Mr. Belenowski if I would, a 40-year veteran of Water and Power, because he's been around. Is that all right, Jim? He's been in the street. He's got a suit on today, he's usually in a overcoat. Come up here, Stephen, I want to have the council have some of your expertise, if you would here. Hold my time for a moment. Mr. Belenowski, when did you start with the Department of Water and Power?
March 7th, 1969, St. Patrick's Day.
Good day, good job there. And always in Waterside?
Yes, sir. Same division.
Okay, so you've been through the '71 earthquake, as well as the '87 Woodya quake and the '94 Northridge quake.
Everywhere.
How many times in those quake experience where we really knew something was happening? You had massive breaks all over the city?
That's correct. During the other earthquake, the 93 or the 94 quake and the '71, we didn't have a lot, but the other earthquakes, we didn't have as many.
'87, which is more in the San Gabriel Valley.
That's correct.
Okay, on that issue here. Now, have you ever seen anything like this in your 40-plus years of service?
I've seen quite a few main breaks in my time. Just it seems like there's a few more this last summer than there normally is.
Right. Could the ground be hotter in the sense, is it, what's the outside temperature of the soil and the earth have to do with the pipe?
Actually, we can't find really anything that has to do with the soil temperature. We're looking at the soil temperatures, though, we're looking at the temperature of the pipe, we're looking at loads put on it by heavy equipment, we're looking at operational changes, we're looking at our reservoirs, see what's different.
Right, you're looking, because some of them, like everything in Mr. Corretts, I think before the water goes to the 5th, it goes through probably Stone Canyon Reservoir, some of his area here, and then some parts of the Hollywood area, Fairfax area, it would come through the Hollywood Reservoir Complex.
Yes.
So you're looking from those systems in.
Everywhere.
Has there been any significant breaks out of the Silver Lake or Ivanhoe Reservoir Complex?
I don't recall any major breaks out there.
Right, right. And is this break that was on cold water separate from the breaks that we have? Because most of them, for the first time I heard the other day at Athan La Brea, there was a fire hydrant break. That's the only one that I've heard has been a fire hydrant break. Have you heard others?
There's, yeah, there's fire hydrant lateral breaks that we have on time to time with the teed fittings or the gate valves or the lateral themselves.
Is the fire system on the same system as the city system?
That is correct.
So it's the same water, but it's a bigger pipe?
Yes. Well, we, our normal size is six inch for fire protection.
And as Mr. Cardenas spoke earlier about staffing, is there adequate staffing at this moment?
We have good staff, we've got a good plan, of course. If we add additional crews, a few more additional crews, we can increase, not substantially, but we can increase our laying input.
And the other thing, too, in this, despite I talked to Ms. Yancey, the government affairs representative and who's always very helpful to all of us on this issue here, this diagram here, which I would love to someday see up there, interesting enough, the older sections of the city is the blue. Is that right, Jim? I know it's far away.
The older pipe is the bluish-green color.
And that is not, there's no breaks there?
There's not, few.
Few, but the red is where the breaks are.
Red is where the breaks are.
And could the geology of the soil be different in the central city or, let's say, east of Western Avenue, because most of these breaks have been west of Western Avenue, to Boyle Heights at all? Have you looked at that? I mean, that's a real significant, this is on page number 12, members of council, but I think that's a significant diagram that shows where it hasn't broken, where it has.
Yeah, the geology and the soil corrosivity of the city varies widely--
Right.
--throughout the city. The point of this graph, though, was to point out, and actually, the graph that Councilman Cardenas was talking about points out the same thing, that the oldest pipe is not necessarily the leakiest pipe.
Right.
And a lot of people keep, they want to draw it naturally, and I think logically, you draw the connection, you think, well, the oldest pipe's going to be the most problematic pipe, not always the case. So we need to take all these other factors into consideration, which we do when we decide what pipe to replace.
And I don't know a comparable agency to Water and Power, whether it's Seattle, I don't know if Seattle is there, but in the northwest or in snow country, colder weather, do they have more breaks than they do in the west, which doesn't have the--
They have more breaks, but their pipe is also a lot deeper in the ground.
They have the pipes a lot deeper in the ground.
Yeah, they have to put the pipe way deeper than we do.
Way deeper in the ground. And is there any, and San Diego has what water system?
I didn't hear the question last.
San Diego City, which is a city south of Los Angeles, about 135 miles or so.
I'm familiar with the city.
What kind of water system do they have? Do they experience--
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. You can wrap up.
Just one last question on that. Anybody had a comparable experience?
We have not seen any kind of comparable experience, but we're talking to a lot of colleague utilities to see.
Thank you, Mr. Nahai, for your leadership, Mr. McDaniel, all the water team, and Mr. Belenowski for your great work for 40 years with the Department of Water and Power. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Mr. Reyes is next.
Thank you, Council President. First, I want to thank Mr. Nahai and the managers for facing an undaunting task. But I'm looking at this map and I apologize, I already answered this. We talk about project prioritization methodology and you look at the age of the infrastructure versus where you have the most leaks. What is that attributed to? Is that the type of material, the nature of the infrastructure, or is it the geography, the topology? I mean, what's causing, why is such a, it's contrary to logic. You'd figure the oldest would have the most leaks, but according to this map, that's not the case.
Right.
I was hoping you could speak to that and just shed some light on that. Please hold my time.
What we, in almost, I'm going to say, in almost all cases, the first cause of the leak is some sort of corrosion. You get some sort of corrosion, but you've got to look beyond that, you need to look, well, what caused the corrosion? And that's where it gets complicated because you get into the, what's the soil chemistry? What was the pipe originally made of? Some pipes were bought from certain manufacturers decades ago that were of higher quality than other pipes. So we keep track of what, you know, what material the pipe is made of. And so all those factors go into determining which kind of pipe is going to have the most leaks per 100 miles, which is how we keep track of that.
So as we became more modern, would I assert our materials got weaker and more corroded over time? Would that be fair to say?
You know, the infrastructure doesn't get any better as it's, over time, but I think that the, it's a mistake just to look at age because that's not the best indicator. Age is certainly part of the, it's part of the overall assessment, but it can't, you can't just look at age alone.
And how large is the aquifer underneath the valley? I understand we have a tremendous aquifer underneath and it's a, it's like it's a huge underground lake.
Right.
How large is that?
It's hundreds of thousands of acre-feet in capacity and we have the rights to pump 87,000 acre-feet a year from the San Fernando Basin aquifer.
So is there any impact because we do, that translates into a hollowing effect, wouldn't it?
The amount that we're able to pump from that aquifer is based on how much is replenished naturally so that you're not drawing down the aquifer. It's, you're supposed to be keeping it in balance and that's what we design our pumping around.
So it would be a stretch to try to create nexus between leaks, amount of leaks and the strength and the infrastructure that's underneath, the natural, I'm going to say, the strength of what holds up the city. Is that too far-fetched?
I think what Jim is saying is that the program is designed in such a way that there isn't overdrafting.
So you don't compromise?
If an aquifer is overdrafted, is too much taken out, there will be subsidence that will occur. So the program is designed in such a way to ensure that there isn't any subsidence.
Okay.
So I hope that that answers the question, but is it a question worth exploring?
I think that falls into the, and you know, we gave this, passed out this presentation and I was kind of able to make a few comments about it, I didn't quite get a chance to do that, but we have put together a team and one of the members of our team is JPL and they have some expertise in geophysical analysis, looking at small ground strains and ground movements. So that's going to be one of the things that we're going to have them look at.
It's just the urban planning and the architectural side, when I study other cities and what has occurred in other places, you have whole sections of cities sinking because they were not careful in the past.
Right.
And you have sections in, these are metropolitan areas that they just lost sight of the eventual impact given their water needs and you literally had whole sections of towns sinking.
Mexico City is a classic example of that and that has not been a case for us. We've managed our groundwater basin very carefully to avoid that kind of a problem.
Yeah, so again, I just, because I know there's folks probably thinking that and it's come to my attention, so I'm glad you--
But we are--
--set it for the record how we are taking very purposeful and cautionary steps and making sure that type of phenomenon doesn't occur here.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith, did you want to go last? Mr. Rosenau's also on the queue? Okay, Mr. Smith is next then.
Thank you very much, and I don't need to close. I think what you have here is a report that suggests that we come back with more information, which is, I think, what the council wanted. Certainly, Mr. Corretts is right to ask the questions, what's going on? And that was the purpose of my motion, was to ask everybody a question, what is going on? You reported to us and Mr. Cardenas pointed out that there's not an exorbitant number of breaks, but what the Daily News has reported out there, the nature of the breaks are different. That is, they're the larger mains, not the little eight-inches that are breaking, in a disproportionate number than any time in the past. So these are questions that need to be asked. We've talked about in committee, the differences of the pipe, the aging is an issue, corrosion is an issue. We talked about the nature of the water and where LA's water system once upon a time was 80% water from Northern California, nice, clean, pure water versus 80% now, which is MWD water, higher salinity values, other nature of what we're chlorinating, now not chlorinating, but oxidizing water, all these issues that have changed the system and may have an impact on the delivery of the system. And so those are the questions we were brought up in committee. The department did a very good job of answering what they could. I think it was an appropriate request of the committee, which, Ms. Perry's not here today, but the request of the committee is to form this experts committee, working group with the Dr. Gade from USC and the gentleman from Cornell and other experts, our city engineer, as well as your department engineers, to provide staff to come back to us in 30 days with the best analyses you can make in that timeframe, and if necessary, longer, on what is the situation? Is there an anomaly or not? Is this extraordinary event or not? And then what would be the next steps? And so that's what we've asked for. I think that's the appropriate thing to do. I would point out, and Mr. Coretts mentioned briefly, because I brought it up in committee, that in 1989, when the Cincinnati Bengals went to the Super Bowl, that on their very first timeout, most of the water mains and sewers in the city of Cincinnati exploded. And that was a function of an awful lot of people using at the same time. And so that brought into play the question about our water policy and people using more water at the same time, and whether or not that's had an effect. And the initial response is no. I continue to think there is some connection there, and I think most people in the city think there's some connection there. So I, I want to look at those experts and your engineers when they analyze the effect of convection of over, when you're pulling a lot of water out, and all of a sudden you stop, and the pressure that would then quickly build up. In my mind, and I'm not an engineer, and I'll be the first one to say I'm wrong if I'm wrong, but there's something going on, and that's the point. And I think it needs to be explored, and I think what the committee's asked for is the right decision. So I think we need to approve that today and go forward, and get back here in 30 days and find out what the problem is.
Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, for how you operate around here.
It's a pleasure.
Good morning. Everybody asks me the same question over and over, and the media's played on it, and I know you've already answered, but let's hear it again. Right now, we do watering twice a week. Some people are saying it puts the pressure on the pipes, and that has created, what some people feel, a multitude of breaks that normally don't happen. True or false?
Well, you know, we don't, we don't dismiss that at all, but, but what we ask is for the time to enable the experts to study it.
Yeah.
And let us know whether, whether there is a truth to that.
Very good. And when do you think you'll know that?
Uh, well, we, we, we're going to provide the EME Committee with a, with an update in 30 days. This was from last week.
Okay.
I don't know that we'll have all of the answers.
Okay, so we'll get a better understanding as the experts go forward.
We'll be, we'll be further along with, with, and we're going to be looking at a, at a number of different theories, not just this one.
Sure.
Counselman, let me just respond to that, just from, from an engineering perspective.
Please, yeah.
What, what happens when that, because you're right, there has been, I think, a lot of confusion on this issue. What, what we are seeing is, we are seeing fluctuations in pressure. What we are not seeing are higher pressures. We're actually seeing a dip in pressures when people are watering, but then it comes back up to the, the normal steady-state pressure at the upper end. So we're not seeing spikes in pressures, but we're seeing fluctuations more on the low side than, than on the high side. I also wanted to point out, I, I had them put, put up a chart, just, this is just data. I, I'm not prepared necessarily to draw conclusions, but people have asked, well, what's going on? This is a, a six-year leak and break history by month, so that, the bar on the far right-hand corner, and I know the numbers are too small to see, but it's more to look at the pattern, that the, the bar on the far right-hand is the month of September. That's current data as of yesterday. So as you can see, we've had, in the last few months, we've had an increase, but it still is within an overall kind of normal range. It's certainly higher than we'd like to have it, but it's not unprecedented, the, the activity that we're seeing right now. The, the brown at the bottom are the more severe breaks that cause the street damage and, and tend to, to get the, a lot of the media attention.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Again, we got an uptick on those. We're trying as quickly as possible to analyze the data and find out if there is a cause for that. But I think it's, it, this helps kind of put things in a, a longer-term perspective of what's going on.
And this is, this is why we've, we've made the point, that we get, you know, four or five breaks or leaks every single day. We get 1,400 of them a year. And that's a much better record than other American cities. And the, the crews get out there, and they do their work efficiently, and people don't even notice. What has happened here is that, is that we've had two very spectacular events that occurred back-to-back.
Yeah.
And of course, that has focused the attention of antedinos on the issue, I think, naturally.
Sure.
But I, but I hope that this graph will help allay concerns somewhat, that, that this is not in terms of the numbers unprecedented, but we do understand that people are concerned. We're not going to minimize those concerns.
Yeah.
We're going to get down to the bottom of it and provide an explanation for the uptick that's occurred.
No, we appreciate that very much, and I still have to think of Brett Levin, who was a firefighter in Westchester, who died in an explosion as he was going into a cabinet there, and those pipes blew out the, the manholes went way up, and, and that was a whole nother issue, but it's our pipe system and, and all of that. When you look at San Diego, they put a tax on themselves to repair and to replace their infrastructure about 10, 15 years ago. Do we need to focus on some kind of a long-term plan of replacing the old pipes and putting in new pipes? Is that part of where you want to take this, which I hope the answer is yes?
Well, we, we do have a plan. We do have a pipeline replacement program, which Jim talked about, and we're going to continue that. And I think Jim's plan is for, for next year to replace 110,000 feet of pipe. That's 22 miles, if my...
Right.
So, so there is, there is ongoing work. It's been done, you know, as I say, quietly and efficiently, and, and it will continue to go forward.
The last thing is, I think you should talk to the media and give them a better appreciation, because it's the media that drives most of the people's awareness of things, and they made a big deal out of that in the context of these things. So I would suggest you hold a little bit of a press briefing for the local television and newspapers, and explain to them what you're explaining to us here in the council.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Labange.
Yeah, I also think they should go on Channel 35, too, with a special program, you know, because people don't understand it as well as they should. One question, I know, we have an ordinance that prevents you from working in peak hour restrictions. Are you exempt in this work at all? So I think they should be exempt, members. This is a critical time. I mean, if we're going to try to get this done, would it be helpful to that, Mr. McDaniels? Because sometimes your crews have to stand down, and I was just thinking, on Sunday at Ethan La Brea, when they had the blowout there, it was a Sunday, so overtime crews came in, et cetera. But if it was during the week, it may have prevented you from being on La Brea.
For, for emergency, emergency repairs, we have the ability to get in and do what needs to be done. Where, where we do have some restrictions is on that, that preventative work, the planned work ahead of time. Currently, we do have to comply with the traffic moratoriums, and it does limit our working hours.
I know. Mr. Rosenthal, you're head of the Transportation Committee, trying to keep them working. There's some work is prevented because they're restricted due to the peak hours.
Right.
Uh, I want to try to get them to be able to do a full day's work, but they have to stand down on some streets here.
Well, what we need to do, frankly, is figure out what streets you need to work more than that, and find a way to accommodate it if it doesn't create more gridlock out there.
But it does if you have a tractor in the street, and you've got to, you know, and doing that thing. But I think we have to find a way, maybe we'll have it, we'll take it up in committee, and maybe you could come and give us an idea, because it shows both the power. I've seen it a number of times, men where, and, and women from the Department of Water Power had to be standing down because they've been on streets when we should be putting it.
We'd be very happy to have those maps in front of us in transportation and see how we can coordinate and cooperate and work together. Great idea.
Believe it or not, there've been more power blowouts in the last two weeks than there have been water blowouts. Is that right? Power have gone out in, in some areas a little more, I'm told? The numbers of power outages from the old, but maybe that's, the, the water guys aren't going to rat on the power guys, so I'm not going to... Okay, thank you. We'll look at that, but I want to hear straight, Jim. If you think we should change it, we should, because I hate to see us not be able to do a full day's work. The only other requirement I have is work with DOT to have maybe a traffic officer to ease the traffic through.
We welcome the opportunity to work with DOT and the Transportation Committee.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Any other members who wish to be heard on this? If not, I think the action, to receive and file this, is that?
Actually, Mr. President, there is a recommendation on this.
We'll refer a vote, and then, okay. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, that's approved. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate the time. And if, if you don't usually wear a suit, get back in that overcoat, and we'll, we'll see you out there in the field.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Uh, next item, please.
Uh, next, Mr. President, I believe number 18 was called special by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks, is that their case? Does our clerk tell the truth?
If I could have the staff come up?
All right. He's, he's not going to opine, but I, I think he takes your word for granted. Number 18, if we can have staff come forward.
Yeah, you know, I, I did all my nice stuff with LADOT on the earlier item. I, I'd just like to carry over the conversation we had in council, in committee about this project, and maybe you could explain to us, how much of dollar value are we going after on these requested call-for projects with Caltrans?
Our share has been about 1.5 to 2 million dollars from the $50 million statewide.
Say it again?
1.5 to 2 million dollars.
1.5 to 2 million, and how, and what's the value of the, and the number of projects we're submitting?
The number of projects we're submitting is about 21 projects for 10.2 million dollars.
Okay. And could you explain to us how you came about these 21 projects?
Well, the, the 21 projects that you see here is a result of collaboration between the department, different bureau, city bureaus, street lighting, Bureau of Street Services, Bureau of Engineering, CLA, and council office staff. This, this list was about 40 projects before, and then slowly, we're going through these projects.
Okay, now, maybe I missed it, but that's the first time I heard you say council staff, because I didn't hear that at committee. So do you know that every council staff or every council officer is part of this process?
We, we have sent a notification to council offices to comment on the existing list. This existing list has been shared by council offices for the, since, actually, since 2002, Councilman.
Okay, so, and I think somebody mentioned at committee, this is an old list that you're cleaning up? Old projects?
Old list, we add projects to it as we go along with our projects.
One of, my biggest concern, and I want to correct one thing on the committee report, I voted against it, because in my judgment, LADOT continues to ignore a very large part of the city from the south of the Santa Monica Freeway and west of the Harbor Freeway. And in fact, when I first got here, we asked, why weren't we getting more projects? And you said, or your department told us we weren't getting them because we had none that were identified. So then we went and found money and, and did an LA, or a South Los Angeles study, and it appears that even with that study, none of those projects get consideration as we go for the issue of dealing with call-for projects. And so it just, to me, doesn't make sense that we would be looking at this list of 21 projects, and in looking at it, we find that the same type of things that are being recommended throughout the city are more than appropriate in areas that you're ignoring. And then, when we, as I commented in the committee, when you go back and look at safety loop projects, the last time we were successful, almost a half to two-thirds of all city safety loop projects were in the valley. This recommendation has 11 of 21 in the valley. And then, when we think about the issue of call-for projects with MTA, we get a similar type of percentage, and, and there is no consideration for areas that have significant developmental funds that come about for, for traffic mitigation. That's a layer on top of all of these funds, but yet the areas that do not have any developmental funds, did not get safety loop, are not successfully getting MTA call-for projects, are not considered on the Caltrans. And so I just don't understand how nothing south of the Santa Monica Freeway, whether we're talking about CD 11, CD 10, CD 8, 9, and portions of 15, are not considered in any way as you relate to going forward. And then even the couple that CD 8, 9 have, they're a combination of traffic signals that are on the far east, but certainly not considering where some of the greatest congestion is. And I'm just trying to get a sense of how do we keep going back to the same analysis when, in fact, we've pointed out to you, there's a major donut hole called South LA that doesn't get the attention?
Well, Councilmember, I, I'd like to thank you for your comments. You know, we always seek guidance and comments from this chamber. We, we, actually, we were supposed to meet with your staff just between the Transportation Committee, but we couldn't schedule, I couldn't schedule anything. So we would like, we met with your staff just prior to this meeting, and we'd like to meet with staff, members all of the South.
But we'd like our input before you make the decisions, because once, I understand this project is due at the state...
October 8.
October 8. So we have little and no time to even get input, and we don't know when the next set of call-for projects will be coming about. I'm assuming a year or so down the road. So for the city to produce $10 million with the projects for potential 2 million, and we not even be on the list, and then I understand that we missed totally the, the date for safety loop this year. So our, all of our projects went in late, and we're just fortunate, I understand, that the federal government decided not to consider safety loop. So again, we put on whole, for an area, and the whole issue of the South LA study was developed so there'd be a guide for DOT to look at what the needs were, because you did the study, so that when you got ready to do call-for projects, there wouldn't be a guessing game, or there wouldn't be a situation where you're just talking to some of the engineers who might have pet projects in, in the hopper.
Uh, Councilman, if you allow me, I only comment on the HSIP, Highway Safety Improvement Projects. Now, for the Highway Safety Improvement Project, there are a lot of streams attached, there are a lot of streams attached to this, to this kind of funding, you know. Your congestion is very important. This is a very dry engineering process. The people who review these applications are all professional engineers, rather than call-for projects or safety loop projects or safe-out-to-school projects. But for this HSIP, just allow us to go ahead with this list for this time, and we will get back with everybody, and then we'll prepare a better list next time for just HSIP. I cannot talk on behalf of highway safety, other, other projects, safety loop and call-for projects.
Do we have the ability to amend this as it's going through the system, or once it leaves here, it's a set group of 21 projects?
Well, we can always add projects between now and the deadline. That's, that's, that's not an issue.
The deadline about October 8.
It's your, it's your project. You can add projects to this list. But, you know, the issue of the staff, 21 projects, 21 staff members, or maybe 10, 10 or 15 staff members have to work on this, on these applications, and they need to start actually yesterday. You know, this, the time is, and there's a lot of data that is required, part of this accident data, congestion, traffic counts. So if, if, if we, if you like to add projects to this list, I would say that we, you need to make the decision today or tomorrow.
Okay, and none of these projects are prioritized?
No, there's no priority required on this, on this, on this.
And then, what's the process if you're adding projects?
We just have to prepare applications for it.
Okay.
Per year, per council approval.
And what is the latest in the sense that we'd have to transmit it to meet the, the October 8 deadline?
By the end of this week, Councilmember.
Okay, all right. Let me ask, Mr. President, is it possible that we can continue this to Friday, and we can look at the issue of adding projects to the list? Otherwise, we have a potential of missing a whole year.
Okay. Is there any objection to continuing? We are, Mr. Chair?
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Labange.
Is it practical by Friday, you could come up with some projects?
No, it's not.
Do they have to reduce the other projects that are there?
The funding, reduction in the funding? No. Well, we need just more, um, grant for this, for this, for this. You know, we should add to that 2.2.
Right, that makes sense. So I support this.
So the thing is, we could submit 23, 24 projects.
We can submit as many projects as you wish, but, you know, staff has to prepare them, and they need, they need to be able to...
As far as we're concerned, we think staff is well-rested, because they haven't prepared them in the past.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Rosenthal.
Just a point of clarification. The bottom line is this, we want to get those grants as quickly as possible.
Absolutely.
So by Friday, we can work it out, and then we can go forthwith. You don't see a problem with that?
No, by Friday, yes.
Okay.
Just as a reminder, colleagues, we'll be in Van Nuys on Friday.
Okay, we'll be in Van Nuys on Friday, but we want to go forthwith on Friday.
Absolutely. Actually, we have already started.
And if Mr. Parks and you need a sidebar between now and then.
Ms. Hahn also has some concerns, because she's part of that donut hole in the middle of...
All right, so without objection, we will continue till Friday. Thank you very much. Next item called special, please.
Next item is item 22, and that was called special by Councilmember Smith. Next item is item twenty-two, and that was called special by Councilmember Smith.
Mr. Smith, we have item number twenty-two.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Very quickly, just if the airport department will come forward. We have concerns about how we could do this, that there was a report from the police department and from the one committee requesting an ordinance be drafted. They had a request from this Hans committee saying, receive and file this, because there's ordinance being worked out at the airport. So, we are kind of perplexed on how to solve this problem structurally within the council. So, if we could just have a comment from the airport department on their plans, and then I think their intent is to move to receive and file, and they will bring it back to us.
Mark Adams, Los Angeles World Airports, good afternoon. In T C T committee, what we had indicated was that we intended to take the police commission's recommendations, work with the city attorney, and come up with an ordinance that everybody could be happy with, and bring that back to the council at a time after the Board of Airport Commissioners had a chance to bless that particular recommendation that all the departments were happy with. And I think that is still our intent, and hopefully we'll get you something fairly soon.
Fairly soon, we, by the end of this year or so, hopefully.
Yeah, before the end of the year. That would be our intent.
Thank you. And on that, we had a request from the police department to continue this matter, but I explained to them that it's going to be continued, you're going to continue discussions with L A P D on this as well, and hear from the experts at the airport. So, with that, Ms. Han and I agree that this needs to be received and filed, and then we can go forward and ask the airport to report back to us by end of the year. Thank you.
Right.
Okay. Ms. Haughton.
Thank you.
And there's one card from the public, though I know you had the hearing before, so unless it gets you.
Okay, yes. Thank you, Mr. Smith, and that's true. And actually, this is an issue about dogs in L A X terminals by their owners and causing a problem for our L A X police and L A P D canines. There was, you know, there was kind of, I don't know, you know how dogs are. But our dogs with the police force, of course, are on duty, and they need to be paying attention, and they're watching out for what's going on, and other people's dogs were causing a problem. So, this is about creating an ordinance that will mandate that other dogs are kept in crates or kennels while they're in that area. The problem before was that our L A X police, I think, and our L A P D weren't exactly working on this together. Now, apparently, they are, they're working on an ordinance that will work for both groups, and now the airport commission will take it up. But we don't lose jurisdiction over it completely. It will come to the council where we can have oversight on the final ordinance. So, I think what you've suggested, Mr. Smith, your receiving file is the right thing for us to do today.
And I'm sorry, just for clarification, that would be to adopt the T C T report that would receive and file?
Yes, yes. Your bark was bigger than your bite. Just had to say that.
Okay. With that, receiving file, nobody wishing to reopen the public hearing on that? Okay. Hearing none, we'll go ahead. Excuse me, sir. That's the protocols, you know. Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That will be the order. Next item, please.
Next item is item number twenty-seven. That was called special for cards, and there is a substitute motion that's been distributed on item twenty-seven C.
Dr. Williams is first, and then Mr. Sax is second.
Good afternoon. Clyde Williams, El Cerrano. Again, where's the audits for all of the reimbursements for the fees that have been waived and such? In this particular days, there's only one issue that actually has a number on it, all the rest just say, well, they'll be covered. I wish the neighborhood councils could do the same thing. Ah, don't worry about it, it'll be covered, and eventually get audited, as we are now. So, again, somewhat like next Friday, there will be a considerable increase, again, back up to an annualized rate of around five to six million dollars, which, again, is the total budget of the neighborhood councils, all eighty-nine of us, times ten people, times maybe ten hours a month. That's a lot of free labor that is being used to better the neighborhoods for the special events, and we have a lot of them. We have to be audited. Why aren't the others being audited? Thank you.
Mr. Sax is our next speaker. After that is Anthony Manzano.
Yes, good morning again, Arnold Sax. At the past Transportation Committee meeting, one of the most fascinating items that came on the agenda involved something that I'm sure the public's really not aware of. According to Traffic Management Services of L A D O T, because they're running out of funds, the Hollywood Bowl, the Greek Theater, Dodger Stadium, Staples Center, L A Live Complex, and the Los Angeles Memorial Coliseum in and around Exposition Park, which have traffic control for free. You hear that? Like, when you go to the Lakers games and you want to leave, the traffic officers are working for free. When you want to have a farmer's market, you have to pay. When you want to have a block party, you have to pay. When you want to have a neighborhood event, you have to pay. But Dodger Stadium, free. Greek Theater, free. L A Live, free. Free, 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 free. While the council is busy caulking all the little air holes, they seem to have lost sight that they have no roof on their house. How can you sit and talk about budget problems? There was an article in the newspaper, seven point one million dollars spent by Public Works cleaning up graffiti. Please, this controller, how much is spent by the L A D O T on paying for officers for the free events held at these monumental arenas? Over three hundred events a year, and they're all free. So, you get to pay twice. You get to pay because A E G's not paying, the courts aren't paying, the public is paying.
Anthony Manzano is our next speaker. After Mr. Manzano, let's see if there's any members who wish to be heard. Good morning, sir.
Thank you, good afternoon. My name is Anthony Manzano, and I'm here to express to this council that Live Strong Day is an international event, and it's going to occur this Friday, October second. And I'd like to ask that it be recognized as Live Strong Day, with over a dozen events taking place here within the City of Los Angeles, activities and bike rides organized for the entire weekend. Today, there was a conference call at eleven o'clock, and I didn't make that call, but it was basically to touch up on the logistics of the activities coming up for this weekend. But basically, most of the organizations are doing their job and handling the events accordingly. There is no cost to be incurred by the City of Los Angeles for these events, because they're all going to be organized independently. Please show your support for Lance Armstrong and to his foundation for his courageous efforts in sports. On another note, October is right around the corner, and I'd like for my council member to consider a community event that we take place on Halloween, which we call the Legend of Creepy Collis. It takes place annually. This is our fourth year that we've put this event together. I've helped out with the other community members, the council members, the neighborhood council, to put this event together, and please consider it as a special event. It's the Legend of Creepy Collis, October thirty-first. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That will close our public comment. I don't know if those were actually specific items that are on the special events, but in the future, maybe that's better for our general public comment, and this is just for the items that are just before us. But thank you for pointing out those, those very important public events, and thank you for your activism on those. Any members wishing to be heard on any of the special event motions that are before us today? If not, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. We'll next have one item left, that's for closed session. If we can clear the council chambers, we'll now go into closed session in accordance with California state law for a legal matter before this city, and we'll come back into open session should we need to announce any vote that we took. Thank you very much, and we'll be back in a little bit if we can clear the chambers. Thank you.